Good evening. I'll call to order this Tuesday, December 10th, 2024 Fairfield Plan and Zoning Commission Meeting Order. Before we get to our meeting minutes, welcome our new Commissioner, Commissioner Delgado to our ranks. Thank you for taking the plunge with us. We'll move on to meeting minutes from November 4th, 2024, November 12th, 2024, November 19th, 2024, December 3rd, 2024. We'll do them all jointly as in the item. I have a motion. Commissioner Harrison?
I'll make a motion to approve those words for the last four meetings. I don't try to rate the dates or?
Is there a second? Commissioner Harrison?
Yeah, they all look good. Appreciate all of them. And one fell swoop, so thanks.
Commissioner Corcillo?
No, no further.
Move on. Thank you. So we have all regular. Commissioner?
I have a question. Sorry.
Okay, Commissioner Braun?
Quickly, I just printed out the one from the 12th, the one where we passed the fiveplex gentle density. I'm a little concerned that it looks as though, is it clear enough? It seems to say a total of five units on a 15,000 square foot lot for one family occupancy consisting of an additional unit for one family occupancy. It sounds like they're saying you could put six there. I thought it-
No, total is five.
But it looks like you're adding another one.
No, what the language says is a total of five, then it spells out how you get there. Because you could have three, you could have a single family and a two-family.
I understand that.
Right. So if you're total of five comprised of one additional dwelling unit and then one additional-
I guess I'm saying, why are we saying one additional when we're already saying you can have five there? It sounds like we're saying adding on to the five.
No, it's adding on to the three. So that's how it was.
Although it doesn't say it would be three.
Well, that's the language in the regulation, right?
This is what we drafted, so.
That's what was proposed and what was approved. The only thing that was changed was the stipulation that it be the need restricted for the longer of the life of the building or perpetuity. The language wasn't modified.
I guess the point is, Commissioner Braun, like there was much we-
As long as everyone thinks it's clear, I thought it was a little confusing. Okay.
I don't think there's much we can do at this point either. Regulations been amended. I think it reads as we, as Mr. Went said.
There's probably more words there than need be. I don't disagree, but what the intent was is this, hey, you could do, you could have three as of right, but you can get to five comprised of one additional this and one additional that. So that's how the-
Okay, thank you.
All right. Any other unanswered questions about the minutes or can we put this to a vote? All those in favor, please say aye or raise your hand.
Aye, but abstained to December 3rd.
Okay, fair enough. Mr. Went, is that easy enough to address? Okay. So passes unanimously with the abstention from Commissioner Levy for December 3rd. Next item is our organizational meeting. First, we'll do the election of officers. We'll start with the chair. Much to really discuss with it, so we can just move right in. Commissioner Harrison?
I'd like to nominate Thomas Noonan to be our chair for the next year.
Thank you. Is there a second? Commissioner Corcillo? Thank you.
I think Tommy has probably won the hardest jobs in town government, and you've always been very fair. Your, the commissioners give the public people time to speak as well as the applicants, and I really appreciate your diligence and commitment to this commission and making sure that things run smoothly and efficiently. And I'm looking forward to serving with you.
You're very kind words. Commissioner Corcillo?
That well said. I think the last year was an incredibly busy year for this commission between the large number of applications we had and also the P O C D layered on top of that. And I thought it was, in spite of that, a very productive year, and I credit that to your leadership and the effective way you managed this commission and this proceeding. So I agree. I enjoy serving under you and with you and learning from you.
Thank you very much. Any other nominations? Commissioner Braun?
I'm supporting also Chairman Noonan. Nice chat today. Thank you very much for reaching out to me. I think we, some of my concerns, I believe we have a meeting of the minds or a general way of ensuring that we have smooth communications between the public, the staff, the commission, the applicant. And I look forward to continuing to work on that as well as to find ways to make better use of perhaps expertise around town as well as I'm going to look up to see if we are able to hire experts without having to put it in our regulations. So I'll get back to you on that. And thank you very much.
Thank you. Anytime. Call and discuss anytime. Another nominations?
No nominations, since I nominate you. But I just wanted to add one thing. You know, we had a good discussion today, and I appreciate you always having the door open for that. And, you know, we talked about education. You know, we have had a lot of new members in the last few years, myself, I still consider myself, even though I've been out for four years. And we talked about maybe having, you know, outreach with maybe town council about 838. You know, I've read, you know, media reports that some commissioners believe that we abdicated our duties by not, you know, creating a lot more homes and maybe 838 is really, and that's why we're not exempt from 838. And I think we need to have, you know, more education so we can move forward in a positive way. I don't want anybody to think our commission ever does hard work. I think we've been done doing hard work for a long time. Our town was one of the first towns to have an affordable housing plan back in the eighties when we didn't have to. So I just want to make sure that we do, we're fully informed commissioners and we go forward positively. And we always put the best light forward of this commission. So I did think we do work hard.
Any other nominations? This will vote. All those in favor of Commissioner Harrison's nomination, that's office chair, say aye or raise your hand.
Aye.
Thank you.
Just if I may, Mr. Chairman, just to put a footnote on what Commissioner Harrison just said. You did receive, I know it's a big ask, it's an all-day event in March that the Connecticut Bar Association puts on. It is, it's an excellent program. I've attended it several times. It's completely virtual. But it is a big ask. It is an all-day event. But there are a number of really good modules in there that I would direct you to. So I did send that email out. If anybody needs me to send it again, let me know. But and if you attend, submit your paperwork and we can reimburse, I think it's $60. We have funds to reimburse that. So that's it. Thank you for bringing that up.
And thank you. Like, you know, there's things we can do as well, you know, with staff and with county council. Thank you for your vote of confidence. Appreciate it. The kind words, you know, lots to me. We have a busy year coming up. I look forward to working with everybody, doing very well with each, very well together. And this year is gonna, will be a challenge, but we'll get through it and we will do very well. But thank you very much. Our next position is vice chair. I don't normally make motions, but I'd like to nominate Commissioner Corcillo again as vice chair, if I may be bold. I'll often see if there's a second to that nomination. Commissioner Randolph seconds. So, Tom, very proud to again nominate you as vice chair. You're serving very comfortably in the role. I look forward to working with you. Working together has been very good while you're inside and I think you'll be going to continue the role of vice chair.
Appreciate that.
Commissioner Randolph?
Well, I didn't get a chance to compliment Chairman Noonan on your, I think just balanced approach, your professionalism. And I think that Mr. Corcillo, my fellow commissioner, brings, you know, he brings a lot to the commission through his expertise, his measuredness, his professionalism, his bipartisan support, his ideas and his dedication. This is, as we all, as we all know, this is a pretty time-consuming job and has really put a lot of effort into it and as I think all of us really have. And just very dedicated to these issues. So I'm glad to nominate him as vice chair. Thank you.
Any other nominations or comments on the current nomination? I mean, the one point I didn't mention earlier is about this commission. It has been traditional, at least as long as I've been here, for shared leadership between the parties. I find that to be very important. I think that shows a lot of goodwill and good bipartisanship and legality, respect that this commission benefits from and to the extent that it shows a good example that Fairfield and other local towns benefit from as well. We put this to a vote. All those in favor of Commissioner Corcillo as vice chair, say aye or raise your hand.
Aye.
Okay, passes unanimously. Next one is our secretary, and I will again jump in and nominate Commissioner Harrison as secretary. For a second, I see Commissioner Braun seconds. Commissioner Harrison, again, I'm honored to be nominating you as secretary. I think you've done a good job, a very thorough work on this commission. We've worked well together, both in agreement and disagreement, which is fine. That's how things should work. Coming at it from different angles, I think only strengthens the commission's decisions and approach. So I look forward to working, as I said, next year is gonna be challenging. I look forward to working with you as secretary and as I said, the commission as a whole. But for now, I think you've been serving very well as secretary and would like to see you continue moving forward. Well, I guess should you so choose.
Appreciate it. Thanks for your kind words.
Commissioner Braun?
Yeah, I second everything you've stated, Mr. Chairman. I believe that Commissioner Harrison is dedicated and very organized and very committed to the welfare of our town. So she will do whatever needs to be done as secretary of our commission. So I fully support her.
Commissioner Randolph, I'm sorry, Corcillo?
Yeah, I think Commissioner Harrison's always been very diligent and prepared and appreciate her commitment and it's the time and effort that goes into the added work she does in that role. So look forward to continuing to see her in that role.
Any other comments or nominations? Can we put this current nomination to a vote? All those in favor of Commissioner Harrison, continuing to serve as secretary, say aye or raise your hand.
Aye.
Passes unanimously. Thank you, everyone, for-
Congratulations to the three.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for Josephine and both Jim and my wife for everything you guys do just for us and make us a good commission. So, thank you.
We couldn't, yeah, we couldn't do it without you. So thank you for that, for joining us in this, these roles. Next item is meeting schedule for 2025.
Just a couple of notes on this, Mr. Chairman, if I may. It's a typical, it's a typical second and fourth Tuesday schedule with a couple of exceptions. In September, the fourth Tuesday of the month is Rosh Hashanah, so we've moved that to the, there happens to be five Tuesdays in September. Next year, so we've moved that to the 30th. And there's still, there still will be two weeks between that meeting and the first meeting in October. And then November, we've moved that to the 18th, the second Tuesday of the month is Veterans Day, which is, which is a holiday. So those are the two changes from the normal second, fourth Tuesday. I will say, just as a reminder, and I know you probably are gonna grit your teeth, but as a reminder, we do have another meeting next week for a special hearing. And I did send an email out with the agenda. We are gonna need to calendar a date in January to continue our P O C D. You don't have to answer this right now, but we were looking at January 7th. If that's a possibility for you folks, the alternative would be the 21st. So please, you don't have to answer that sitting here now. I'll send another email out later this week. But just to kind of, you know, as Tommy said, buckle up. We're gonna have a busy first quarter of 2024.
Yeah, I wish I can say that these are these and what the two meetings mentioned are gonna be the only ones in the first quarter, if not half of the year. But with the moratorium and people putting in applications, we will likely be having several special meetings. We will obviously work with everybody as best we can with scheduling. But as much as I would love to look at this and say, this is what we're gonna have, plus the two, I don't expect that to be the case. And I wish it wouldn't be the case, but with time deadlines, there's not much we can really do about it. Commissioner Harrison?
Yeah, I had a question. And I realize this is not specifically pertinent to the schedule, but it kind of is. I was just curious. I don't wanna go down a rabbit hole here, but will we be apprised of when we apply for the moratorium?
Yes, the moratorium is in progress. The intent, there's, there's a couple steps. There's a procedural step with the Department of Housing where you need to file an intent to file, which gives them kind of a preview look and then starts a 20-day comment period. Then there's the statutory requirement is following that period. Then there's the actual application that goes up to the Department of Housing, and they have 90 days for the Commissioner of Housing to render a decision. So assuming all is in order, we're expecting that decision to be at the latter part of March. But as Tommy indicated, that, you know, that's not, and it's out there, it's not a secret that this is occurring. There's publications that need to be made that kind of ring the bell saying, and so we do anticipate that we're gonna have several applications in the run-up to that end of March period.
Commissioner Randolph?
Do we have a tentative schedule of when these extra meetings might be scheduled?
Well, it's gonna depend on how far we get with certain things that we have in the hopper presently. So as you well know, you're sitting here now in your third meet, fourth meeting in five weeks, and you got another one scheduled for next week. So if we can, if, probably at the conclusion of tomorrow's, tomorrow's, okay, next week's hearing, we will be in a better position to be able to slot what needs to be heard when.
Okay.
And we can, and we can chart that out for you as we, as we go forward, be helpful.
And that kind of goes back to what I had said a few weeks ago, and I forget where, but obviously here in this meeting is the best we can prepare for these meetings, the best we can be is streamlined. Always need to vet, always need to ask the right questions. I get that. But to the extent that we can be as tight as we can with questions and presentations and comments and all that is only gonna help us moving forward. So, you know, I just keep, I'll keep reminding, just simply because I think that's worth reminding.
Yes.
Go ahead.
So based on everything that's in the hopper, we could probably anticipate-
Excuse me, I can't hear you.
We could probably anticipate meetings starting on January 7th, 14th, 21th, 28th.
I don't know.
You can't predict that, but-
Yeah, I mean, again, we're gonna have to work with you to accommodate your schedules. I mean, it's not your, to make it work within the confines of our statutory obligations for applicants. But, but, yeah, with, with, we got a lot of balls in the air between the moratorium and continuing our discussion of the P O C D. That's gonna warrant at least probably one extra meeting a month, if not more. Yes, I would, I would expect that to be the case.
Thank you. So right now, as we've said, we have a, this meeting schedule set. We have at least two special meetings that we, one next week, and we will discuss on January. But these are at least our regularly scheduled meetings. So can we put this to a vote as far as accepting this? All those in favor, please say aye or raise your hand.
Aye.
Passes unanimously.
I don't know that we even had a motion.
Did we not have a motion? All right. My apologies. I thought we did that.
Or you're fired.
Yeah.
I understood, but I didn't think we had a ticket.
Yeah, no, okay. Can I have a motion to accept the regular meeting schedule? Commissioner Corcillo, second. Second, Commissioner Harrison. All those in favor?
Aye.
Passes unanimously. Thank you for that. Apologies.
Really trying to streamline things.
I know. 55, 45 Park Ave, request of Arthur Hirsch for a 100% bond release of a $210,000, $220 bond pertaining to site improvements in the R3 zone.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, I am, I have a report from our engineering department that says the contractor has done the majority of the work and they're recommending a 50% bond release at this time. We thought there may have been an opportunity. There's a, there's some underground chambers that need to be inspected. They haven't had the opportunity to do that. So rather than the 100% that's listed on the agenda, we recommend a 50% release at this time.
May I have a motion for that 50% release? Commissioner Corcillo?
Move to release 50% of the bond.
Is there a second?
One second.
Commissioner Levy, seconds. Commissioner Corcillo?
Staff's comments and recommendations are sound. Let's see, no reason not to follow them.
Commissioner Levy?
Agreed.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions or Commissioner Braun?
That building is completely built and they're seeking tenants already, right?
Correct. If they have a CEO, this is the, the issuance of that CEO put us over the moratorium cap. So this is just a bond for the site improvements. The vast majority of the work is done. There's just a couple odds and ends that need to be checked off before we give them the full money back.
Other comments or questions? Put this to a vote. All those in favor, please say aye or raise your hands.
Aye.
Passes unanimously. Mill Plain Road, Stillson Road, request of Thomas Mason for 50% release of a $448,285 bond pertaining to subdivision improvement and A-zone. Went?
Okay, Mr. Chairman, it's a new subdivision with a new road off of Stillson. The road is in with the binder course down. The drainage system is in place. There's a fair amount of the sidewalk work done. We do have a memo here from the engineering departments is confirming that they recommend 50% bond release at this time.
Thank you. May I have a motion? Commissioner Harrison?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to release the bond. Back to Mr. Mason?
50%?
50%.
Thank you. Seconds, Commissioner Ford. Commissioner Harrison?
Yeah, it sounds like everything is up to snuff according to the engineering department. So I think the buildings, the homes look really great. The development turned out fast. I have nothing more to add.
Commissioner Ford?
Nothing further.
Any other comments or questions? All those in favor, please say aye or raise your hand.
Aye.
Passes unanimously. 140 Limerick Road, referral pursuant to Section 824 of the Connecticut General Statutes Regarding Town Acquisition of Land.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, there's a memo in your packet from Conservation Director Tim Bishop. This actually historically was a piece of land that was supposed to be a piece of subdivision open space back in 1976, when a Mill Plain Road subdivision was approved that was required. The deed was offered, the Town Planning and Zoning Commission at that time recommended it for acceptance, but for some reason, the RTM never accepted it. So it got passed on to now owned by a Marva Marble and Granite Company of Virginia. It's 1.56 acres in size. It's largely occupied by forest shrub inland wetlands, placing the entire site in a regulated area. It's Mr. Bishop's understanding, the present owner is wishing to donate the parcel, and he's recommending town acceptance. As I said, this was originally intended to be a piece of open space through a subdivision in the 70s. I don't know if, Mr. Bishop is available via Zoom should you have any questions, but his memo, there's a map, it was submitted in there, and we can call that up if you need be, but Mr. Bishop is on the screen should you have any questions.
Let's get a motion on table, please. Commissioner Braun, excuse me?
Make a motion to, is there recommendation?
This is a recommendation for acceptance, yes.
Motion for recommendation for acceptance of the open space donation to the town.
Thank you. Is there a second? Commissioner Ford, seconds. Commissioner Braun?
So Marble Granite never built anything. Why did they, they bought it thinking they would do more subdivision work or something?
I have speculated, I can have a very speculative and specious answer to that question, but it's not- speculate, I can have a very speculative and specious answer to that question, but it's not the, if, if you look at the original subdivider, uh,
Which subdivision is it? The one on the right?
It is, the subdivision map, you can pass that. The subdivision created frontage lots on Mill Plain Road. The triangular piece of property was slotted for, for, for open space that ended, uh, you know, Limerick and Shadow, Shadowwood were already there. Uh, it would, I'm not gonna, it's speculative of how it came. It was originally, the deed was offered to the town. The town never accepted it. So it passed the point and so the original subdivider took ownership of it. It was later transferred to this company. I, I would be speculative to understand the reason why, but it's always been dedicated as open space. They contacted us, can I build something? You said, no, it's subdivision open space. You, you own it. It's taxed as open space.
And it's never been developed, there's nothing that's been built on it that you'd have to do a phase two or phase one or anything like that environmental? And also, um, for Mr.
Bishop.
I'll call you Commissioner Bishop. Anyway, uh, Mr. Bishop, um, um, what percentage of this parcel is wetlands? I assume the whole thing is probably regulated area because we have a hundred foot regulated area, but some percentage is actually in the wetlands?
Thank you, uh, Commissioner Braun. Um, ladies and gentlemen of the commission, um, according to town maps, um, I'm looking at it now, uh, the southern half of the, of the triangle is, uh, all mapped as wetland soil. The hundred-foot upwind review area extends, um, more than three quarters up the, uh, pointy part of the triangle, I'll call it. Um, so a, a huge majority of it's, uh, it's all regulated, but a huge majority of it falls within the, uh, the formal regulated area. Unbuildable.
That's right, and it seems like this is more for preservation of the wildlife or ecological value rather than sort of, um, public recreation.
Correct. The, the intent would not be to, uh, do anything there as far as trails or, or, uh, any act of use. It, it would just be to put under town's ownership, um, for future, uh, you know, continued preservation in perpetuity. Um, luckily it does afford us to access points from the two roads, uh, Director Went mentioned, uh, that are dead ends. Um, sure we need to get in there for any reason, but there's, it, it's, it's strictly a, a preservation, um, uh, intent and, uh, the Conservation Commission did, uh, approve um, acceptance as well for what that's worth.
Does land acquisition look good or do we not need necessarily always need? They, they more recommend things that we're purchasing, I think?
Correct. They, they're aware of it. Um, it is on my worksheet, but, uh, it has not, this came in after, uh, after their meetings since it's our quarterly. So it is in between in meetings, but not required for acceptance.
Well, in your opinion, it's got ecological value for wildlife, perhaps pollinators, perhaps flood, um, management, drought management, all those, um, ecological benefits?
I would agree. Uh, it's, it, it is from the air. You can see it's, you know, um, the, the triangle shaped parcels wedged, literally wedged in between, um, high density, um, residential housing. Um, so it, it does afford, uh, wildlife and, and flood, uh, flood control benefits to the area.
And I assume because we're not going to be making trails in it, it would be less cost to the town to maintain, probably just fencing and perhaps a sign or something, but not having to maintain trails or walkways or anything like that.
Correct. I, I don't anticipate any maintenance costs for this parcel.
Much appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you.
Nothing further.
Any other comments or questions? None. Can we put this, uh, motion, uh, positive referral to acquire this, uh, plan to a vote? In favor, please say aye or raise your hands.
Aye.
Passes unanimously.
Thank you, Mr. Bishop.
Thank you. Have a good night.
New applications for recommendation to public hearing, zoning regulation amendment, application of P quant realty to add a new section twenty-five seven point ten regarding designation of off-site below market rate units.
I really don't come out of this, this, it's, it's what it says.
It's required public hearing. Uh, may I have a motion, please?
Yeah, I'd make a motion to, to add this for a public hearing.
Second, Commissioner Corcello, maybe refer to that?
No, we have to, um, yeah, looking forward to, to hearing this after.
Commissioner Corcello?
Nothing further.
Hearing is required. We put this to a vote. All those in favor, please say aye or raise your hand.
Aye.
Passes unanimously. One hundred and thirty-three oh one Commerce Drive, application of Fairfield Piaggio for an overall signed plan of the design industrial district. Mr. Went?
Mr. Chairman, this site is presently being converted to a scooter dealership. Uh, the proposal includes a single internally illuminated wall sign. The sign complies with the standards, uh, of the industrial district. The ground sign, uh, used, uh, by prior tenants is being removed and will not be replaced. So it's a single, their, their, their sign plan consists of a single wall sign.
Thank you. May I have a motion on the item? Commissioner Braun?
Looking to approve.
Thank you. Second, Commissioner Ford, thank you. Commissioner Braun?
So this complies with our signing, sign regulations and it's in a commercial district. Women are create. Yes, it's attractive than what's there now, so.
Commissioner Ford?
It seems like an improvement, so I support it.
Further, further comments or questions? Put this to a vote. Seems pretty straightforward as Paul indicated. Uh, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye or raise your hand.
Aye.
Passes unanimously. Uh, nineteen sixteen Post Road, application of nineteen sixteen Post Road Associates LLC to convert existing second floor office space to two residential units in the design commercial district. Mr. Went?
Okay, uh, Mr. Chairman, this is a two-story building. Uh, you may be familiar with it for a while. Uh, it housed Mrs. Green's grocery store on the first floor. It's been vacant for a while, uh, on that first floor. In two thousand and three, two residential apartments were established on the second floor. Uh, this application seeks to convert what was the remaining second floor office space for Mrs. Green's uh, to two additional apartments. No exterior improvements or additions are proposed. This is an interior fit up to convert what was office space, uh, to two units. Um, there was a variance granted, uh, a couple of months ago by the Zoning Board of Appeals for parking because although the typical conversion from office to, to residential is actually a reduction in parking, since the office space was in connection with lower floor retail space, it was never factored into the original parking calculation. So they waived the two additional spaces, but, um, right now the first floor is completely vacant. Second floor has two existing apartments and this is a conversion for two additional apartments on that second floor.
Thank you. May I have a motion, Commissioner Corcello?
Move to approve.
Is there a second? Commissioner Harrison, seconds. Commissioner Corcello?
Ready to, uh, residential units there. Um, I think having another two would be much more logical use of the space at this point in time than, uh, than office space, especially office space that man for a little bit jealous, still get to live within walking distance of Papa Bagel. Um, but, uh, uh, so, um, yeah, I think, I think it's, uh, an application we should.
Commissioner Harrison?
Uh, nothing further, uh, thank you.
Commissioner Braun?
So this, um, they got the variance for the parking and there's no other restrictions based on floor area ratio or residential, um, you can see from our regular?
Correct. There, 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 this is not an add-on to the building. It's just an interior conversion, but the second floor is substantially smaller than the ground floor space overall.
So it makes total sense, uh, to have mixed use right there.
Any other comments or questions or can we put this to a vote? All those in favor, please say aye or raise your hand.
Aye.
Unanimously.
No, I'm abstaining. It's a Russo.
It is, okay. Oh, let's see, five twenty-five Tuxess Hill Cut Off, application of Black Rock Associates to establish a medical office in a portion of an existing building in the design commercial district.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, this is, this shopping center is on the, at the intersection of Tuxess Hill Cut Off and Black Rock Turnpike. You might, uh, Chips is in there and, and, and other tenants in the inch.
Corner.
Yes, I will say Coon's Corner for those of you that were a member of Coon's Corner. I wasn't gonna go there, but thank you. Makes me want a chili, makes me want a chili dog, but it's, it's okay. Uh, in the corner of the elbow, uh, is a indoor soccer facility, Ole Soccer that's moving out and it's being replaced by a primary care, uh, office operated by Hartford Healthcare. There is already a walk-in, um, uh, facility as a separate tenant on, on this space. This will be a primary care office. Uh, interior fit up, it's a permitted use. The parking required for indoor recreation and retail is the same as that for medical, five spaces per thousand square feet. So there is no triggering of an additional parking requirement. It's part of this. It's just simply a change of use from indoor rec to a medical office.
Motion on the item? Commissioner Corcello?
Move to approve.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Levy, Commissioner Levy. Uh, Commissioner Corcello, excuse me.
Um, said CD Ole, uh, leaving the space. I thought that was, uh, uh, a good, a good place for that, but, um, as much as we have lots of, uh, walk-in clinics in town, there's definitely a shortage of primary care physicians, so I think that's a good addition.
Commissioner Levy?
Yeah, I concur. I'll also miss Ole, but, uh, it, uh, Hartford Health is providing a good service to the town throughout, so I'd approve.
Okay. Commissioner Ford?
So question I, there's a, so I'm a little naive. The walk-in is staying and this is in addition to that, right? Correct. They're not related, right? It's not, that's not a. There may be a change there, but that's not part of the certification, but they, they may be taking that over, but it's not related to this. Okay, that's curious. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Can I put this to a vote? All those in favor, please say aye or raise your hand.
Aye.
Alright, onto a public hearing. I will call the three items together because that's what we did last time, right? Yeah. Twenty-one seventy-nine, twenty-one ninety-nine, Post Road, twenty-nine Fairfield Place, application of Sunshine Acquisitions Group LLC to establish the center design business and residential zone, commercial district. Zoning Regulation Amendment, application of Sunshine Group Acquisition LLC to amend sections twelve point three, point sixteen percentage of residential use, twelve point seven, setback height in total area, twenty-five point seven point nine, percentage of the low market rate units, twenty-eight parking and twenty-one point two point sixteen definition of height, zoning regulations and twenty-one seventy-nine, twenty-one ninety-nine, Post Road, twenty-nine Fairfield Place, special permits and local site plan application of some sign acquisition group LLC pertaining to a proposed mixed use commercial residential. Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Congratulations on your appointment. All the other offices as well for the great work you do, volunteer service. I'm John Fallon. Uh, I'm the attorney for the applicant. When last we were together, at least you guys have been together a lot more, but, uh, was four weeks ago. And where we broke off was our traffic consultant engineer sitting next to me here, Dave Sullivan of S L R was giving you an overview presentation with regard to the traffic report that was filed sometime ago. Because of the passage of time, I asked Dave just to kind of give a brief kind of overview to provide context in terms of the points that he had already covered relative to, uh, levels of service and other such things. Uh, then he will conclude his comments, uh, be available obviously for any questions you had. One thing you asked us to look at, we said we would, is the matter of the potential, I, I guess we refer to it as a bump out that, that might be, uh, pedestrian friendly in terms of safety issues. Um, David Haslam did that. I don't know what his conclusions are frankly. I haven't asked him, but he's gonna share those with all of us today. Uh, and whatever he, uh, indicates, hopefully the commission will be comfortable with it. We'll certainly abide by. So Dave, can you just, um, kind of give a quick overview of the essence of your testimony four weeks ago relative to the findings of your traffic report?
Sure. Again, Dave Sullivan, I'm with S L R. My office in New Haven. Um, so this was last meeting, so I've kind of summarized that into a few high points. Um, the first, uh, first thing is the sidelines, which we touched on. So, uh, most importantly is coming out of the driveway onto Fairfield Place. Looking left, you can see, uh, three hundred feet or better, which exceeds what you need for, uh, the posted speed limit of twenty-five miles an hour, which would be two hundred and eighty. Looking to the right, you can see to the intersection, uh, which does not, um, meet two hundred and eighty feet, but of course they're not traveling at the speed limit as they turn the corner. So we looked at that to make sure that, um, as someone's coming out of the driveway, there's appropriate stopping site distance um, uh, for the visibility that it's there, and of course there is. So that's all documented in the report. Um, the sideline for the inbound driveway in Lindberg, um, essentially all we need is stopping site distance to make sure you can see a car as it's, uh, turning in. Taking a left, uh, most, most significantly. And again, um, the distances are there, so if a vehicle is traveling from Rue One onto Lindberg, you can see the car and plenty of time to be able to stop. Decision. A level of service I went through, um, in summary, generally, um, a good levels of service. There are some Ds and Es for individual movements. Um, to, uh, and the important thing is, uh, for the most part, none of those levels of service have changed. So we're not impacting the operations, uh, particularly on a, uh, growth basis per intersection.
Just to be clear, are there any instances where we are changing levels of service?
There is one instance and we're actually not putting any traffic on this, but the side street across from Lindberg currently is on the cusp of D and E. The handful of trips we're adding onto, uh, uh, Rue One there tips it over that, um, that D to an E. Essentially, it's, it's just a matter of putting it over the step function line. Um, uh, overall, number of trips between sixty-five and eighty, new trips. We looked at morning peak hour, afternoon peak hour, Saturday peak hour because of the mixture of uses. Um, and again, now we put those numbers to our model. There is, in addition to that, there's pass-by trips, which are already on the road and there's some shared trips, um, because of the mix of uses. Well, uh, the last thing is the curb extensions or, or bump outs. We did look at it, um, on Fairfield Place, there's not the width there. Um, you add to, to reduce, reduce the width of the road at all there. As a matter of fact, um, well, there is parking allowed on the east side of the road. We're suggesting that there's no parking along our site frontage from the driveway to Rue One. Um, so that, that section of road, uh, is full two lanes without the parking. But further, uh, south, there is parking allowed on that road. Uh, but certainly there's no room for curb extensions there. There is room on, uh, Lindberg Street to put the curb extensions guarded that Rue One and the curb would extend out, uh, above the width, uh, slightly less than the width of the parking space. So that if somebody's coming around the corner, those parked vehicles are protected. Um, so along our entire frontage and also at our driveway, if the commission desires, we could also put, uh, curb extensions right at the driveway to keep that, um, that area clear for visibility. Um, but certainly it's a possibility on Lindberg. On Route One, uh, physically we could do it. Um, I'm, um, not sure DOT would let us. Right now there's enough width out there. We're, um, in the shoulder. You have enough, uh, width, so you could put the curb extensions and, um, and have, uh, protected parking along that section. Um, but the, um, my, I haven't talked to them about this, but my, my thought is that that large shoulder in that area they would like to maintain so that they have bypass for people taking a left turn, um, further north on, uh, or further east on Post Road. Uh, so if somebody's taking a left into properties across the street, there's enough of a shoulder for them to bypass. So my guess is DOT would not let us. Would be happy to. So my guess is DOT would not let us. Would be happy to, um, inquire, but I, I, I don't, I don't think we'll be successful. So that's the curb extension story. One out of three.
Questions for Mr. Sullivan at this point?
Sure, Brian. I have a quick clarification question. I was remote last time. I think there was a handout, but I don't remember specifically. If there was a handout, that would have been put up, that would have been posted, because I didn't see anything new posted other than public comments.
Don't recall a handout from us.
The traffic report in its, in full is posted, but I don't
I have that.
Yeah, nothing else.
Would it be possible to show the traffic report on the screen? So I have a question about ingress and egress.
Sure. Is there a specific page?
Well, my computer just died, so I I can't see anything, but like showing, um, the intersections maybe?
What are these?
Yeah, that would be great. Something showing the development with the intersections on the
That would be, this screen would be better.
I mean, would the, would the engineered site plan make more sense?
This is what is on
Traffic report.
It's page seven.
Figure, figure, figure seven?
Figure seven, I'm sorry. Figure seven.
Actually, all, all of the figures from two through, through eighteen, I believe.
Probably just gonna take a second to move, but I
I could start asking my question anyway.
Sure.
Did I hear you right? Did you say turning to the right, you need two hundred and eighty feet, and you didn't have two hundred and eighty feet? What was that quote that you said? And which direction are we going from where to where?
So if you're coming out of the site onto Fairfield Place.
Cause you exit on Fairfield, you enter on Lindbergh.
Correct. So when you're, when you're exiting, you need to have visibility in both directions.
You can go left or right when you exit.
Left or right when you, when you exit. And to the left, you can see, uh, three hundred feet or more, which exceeds the posted, posted speed limit.
And to the left is south then, towards the ocean?
Correct, correct. And looking to the right, you can see the intersection. And what we want to make sure is we're far enough away from the intersection so that if somebody's taking a left and somebody's coming around the corner simultaneously, and they come into view, that that person that's turning has the ability to see that somebody's taking a left turn.
You mean someone taking a left into the project?
No, taking a left turn out of the project. So if you're taking a left going towards, um, towards the shore.
Sorry, you can only go out of the project. So it would be someone taking a left out of the project that needs the two eighty?
And it needs both.
Okay.
So if you're taking a left, you need to see both directions. If you're taking a right, you only need to see to your left.
That's right. And did you say you didn't have the two eighty?
You don't have the two eighty because the intersection is not two hundred and eighty feet away.
Okay.
It's a hundred and so much feet away. Any of those.
That's the normal way we look at intersections, site distance.
It, for an inter, for a driveway that's in the proximity of an intersection, that's what we look at.
Okay. And then, um, can you just identify which intersection had the reduction from a D to an E in service level?
It, it was opposite, it was the private driveway, uh, opposite Lindbergh Place.
So Lindbergh Street.
Lindbergh Street, I'm sorry.
And the, um, you're showing, um, an aerial, it doesn't really show the development, but it shows the terms. If you could point that out.
I'd be happy to go up there.
Go ahead. Yeah, why don't you, that might be the easiest, most direct way.
Is it the first building behind Fairfield?
Right, right here.
Right here. And as you can see, there's not a lot of traffic there. There's two lefts and two rights. But we're adding a handful of trips to one passing that, which the way levels of service work, if you have bands, for example, um, service A would be zero to five or ten seconds, I forget the number. But then when you get to ten point one seconds, it becomes the next level of service. So in this particular case, coming out of there, you're at level of service D. And then when you, um, um, add a few more trips to one, that level of service D, that's slightly more delayed.
So when you're going from Lindbergh to the post road, doesn't matter if taking a right or a left, it's still a service level D right now?
Correct.
So either way, you're, because there's a traffic, is there, there's a light, no, there's no light there.
Lights are here at South Pine Creek.
Wouldn't it be worse if you're going left and right then?
Yes.
So which one is D now, left turn or right turn?
Well, it's the whole approach, because there's a single approach. So it's, the levels of service are for the lanes, not for the turns, unless it's a separate turn lane.
And you said there's a private drive that affects the service level?
No, the private drive is what we're calculating the service level for.
I'm sorry, private drive is how you calculate it?
It is what we're calculating for.
Oh, the one that crossed the road with the wedding cake building, we call it?
It's part of the existing analysis area.
Oh, okay.
That's the level of service.
Okay, because traffic's coming out of there too.
Correct.
Okay.
Again, it's only for one of the three peak hours we analyzed.
And, um, the sixty-five to eighty trips, um, you don't have to pull up the trip generation, but is sixty-five to eighty trips? I'm sorry, that was, you're gonna have to, uh, so that's AM trips, entering and exiting. Now you enter on one side and exit on the other side. So that would be mostly exiting, I imagine.
In the, in the morning, it's more exiting, yes.
So exiting again is along Fairfield Place.
Correct.
Entering is Lindbergh. And, um, that in, that takes into account the restaurant and the retail establishment that's not yet in there yet?
Correct.
Okay, that would accommodate both.
Yes.
The residents for the, how many units?
Four.
And the employees at the retail and the restaurant.
Correct.
I don't have my materials, so I can't ask any more questions.
You're welcome to share this with me.
I, I think I'm good.
Thank you.
Commissioner Harrison?
I have a question about parking.
Sure, we, we didn't do a parking study per se, but as we have
I just had a question, I guess, just, so there's a proposed restaurant in this development, right? That would be, from my read, it was seventeen forty-three square feet roughly, I think. One thousand seven hundred and forty-three square feet.
Uh, we analyzed thirty-seven forty-nine, I think that's changed.
Okay, cause I thought the application said.
That's the difference between gross and net patronage, grocery versus patronage.
Come forward, Mark, just identify yourself. And just break out the restaurant between gross square footage and patron floor area.
Uh, my name is Mark Andre. I'm the licensed architect for this project and also one of the owner of Sunshine Acquisition Group. The thirty-seven forty-nine, that's the gross floor area of the restaurant. The patron area is seventeen forty-three.
Yeah, that's why I said, yeah.
Yeah, he has the gross square footage.
Okay, got it, got it. All right, yeah. No, that, that's helpful. Thanks. Yeah, I guess, so we're gonna have seven parking spaces for the restaurant.
Under the amendment, correct.
Yeah, okay, under the amendment, okay. But under our normal amendments, we would have one space.
For forty.
Okay. So I, I, I guess I'm just trying to grapple, like, where all the parking is gonna happen, because I mean, I, in an ideal world, everybody, you know, people would go to this restaurant, not just, who will live in the building?
Right. Well, there's a, there's a parking breakdown chart by use that's, that's part of the plans. And, and it, it breaks down our assumptions with regard to parking. Uh, the parking requirements that are mirrored in that, um, chart are consistent with the regulations as we're proposing them. And those regulations as we're proposing them, including the one space for two hundred and fifty square feet of patron floor area for a restaurant, comes from the P O C D draft. So we feel that
Which is unapproved.
Which is unapproved. I mean, look, the, the, the whole, the whole premise of this on some respects, and it, it, this is a good touchstone for it, is this commission has worked exceptionally hard and continued to do so on an evolving P O C D. The elements of that P O C D that are in, 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 in grafted into our amendment proposals, however, have been rather consistent in your deliberations over the last year and a half. So you ultimately have the, obviously, the, the determination to say with regard to both your P O C D and the amendments that we're proposing, but they are consistent on a steady basis with what you have recommended on these issues of taking a more realistic look at your parking regulations.
Yeah, that's fair. I don't know if there's consensus yet on the
Understand, understood.
Time will tell, so.
We, you know, we would, we would have waited until the P O C D was adopted, but we just felt it was important that we move it forward, and maybe this is a good catalyst for all of us to look at these issues.
Very good.
The one concern I wanted to raise, since we kind of already raised it, that is when we see these multi, um, when we say these mixed-use applications, a general theme is a retail component that works kind of in tandem with residential, meaning while people are away at work, the retail's going forward. And then when the retail's closed, the people are home. So you have this kind of, um, yin yang's too much of a, it's too strong, but you have that kind of symbiotic relationship, so to speak. This is a little different in that the restaurant is potentially work, well, not potentially, will be operating in the aft, well, at least at the very least in the evenings.
Right.
Um, and it's less of that symbiotic, it seems like most of it's going to be. Most of the commercial for a res, restaurant, restaurant's gonna be when the people are home.
Yeah, and it's, you're right, and I think the, there is a lot of data in terms of our own town and recently approved mixed-use projects. I mean, we have a lot of mixed-use projects in Fairfield that include a restaurant use, and very successful restaurant use. Alto, and I don't have to tell them you, you approved them. And, and we find that it works fine, and in fact, it creates a sort of element of attractiveness to the residential use, especially when you, um, you, you marry it to things like we're doing here with the public plaza and the open area. So the key thing to make sure it works is what Commissioner Harrison was just sort of, we were talking about, and that is your parking regulations, because if you're sufficiently parked for the residential use and you're sufficiently parked for the restaurant use, then it's still a very nice symbiotic relationship. And I know, and, and that's the, and that's the matter here, because again, we are parking for the residential use and the restaurant use at a standard that's reflective of at least what your draft planning documents suggest is appropriate.
And how, how important is the residential, uh, excuse me, the, uh, restaurant component to it? Is, here we are, you're not wrong in everything you said about the P O C D, neither is Commissioner Harrison about, you know, may, whether there's consensus or not on it, it is still a draft.
Mm-hmm.
But here we are, potentially implementing recommendations, adding density, you know, kind of taking regulation, adding regulation, ending regulations in a way that's definitely gonna add more density to the area. We're taking a leap in that respect. Now we're adding on to it potentially the, I'll say, non-symbiotic restaurant component to it. Is the restaurant component so important to this whole project, or another retail? We, if we approved a retail component, but it not be, you know, if we didn't amend the re, the parking so that you need, you need for the restaurant, would that be fatal?
We, we think the restaurant adds a lot of vitality, uh, to our development. Makes it attractive for our residential tenants and also really makes it an important vibrant development at this anchor location. So yes, we, we, we would much prefer to have a restaurant there than, you know, a sleepy retail that closes at five o'clock in the afternoon and is, for all practice and purposes, boarded up thereafter. We want to create a sense of vibrancy, but you have to be satisfied, and we are, that the parking is appropriate. And again, we're not trying to read your minds or commit you to something, or commit you to something you haven't made a final decision on, but we read the draft. We think the draft makes sense. We hope you'll adopt those elements of the draft because we think that it is forward-looking and reasonable in terms of what par, parking standards should be for residential use in restaurants, and that's what's embodied in it.
One specific question, not one general question. So the use, if, what, what's the traffic, I don't know if you can answer this off the top of your head, but, um, what's the traffic generation for an alternate to a restaurant? So is a, is a convenience store more or less? Or is it something you have to come back to us on?
No, I can, I can give you a ballpark. Um, so the traffic generation, and we do the, the traffic generation on gross for restaurants, because all of our statistics are gross numbers. Uh, but the restaurant, we're projecting, um, thirty afternoon and forty Saturdays for the piece. And generally retail, which is fifteen hundred, so if we were just to prorate that and say two and a half times, we'd get, guess about there, two and a half times, we'd be about twenty-five on both of those peaks. So twenty-five to thirty and twenty-five to forty, so a little bit more on the restaurant than the retail. But again, it's what kind of retail it is too.
Right. And, and then some, thank you for answering that. My, my second question is, um, appreciate the lateral thinking that's gone into this project. Have you all discussed with, with the town, engineers, any potential improvements along side streets? Sidewalk extensions, curbs?
Road improvement, you mean, sir?
Road improvement, sidewalk, yeah.
No, we have not.
Is, is that something that, um, you would consider, because, um, we have a lot of people who are concerned about that, and the park, uh, parking belongs to the town. Just to be clear, parking doesn't belong to the people who, the, the property line goes to the right of way. It doesn't go to the center of the street. So parking is possible, but many of the streets in Fairfield are, are not engineered for proper parking. Curbs, uh, there's may not be adequate sidewalks. Is that something that, that, um, we discuss further with town?
If there are specific things that, recommendations or desires that you would like us to, to look at, we're certainly, you know, open-minded to that. At the end of the day, with regard to parking, you know, it, 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 we really do believe that with the parking regulations as embodied in our amendment, we will have more than sufficient onsite parking with regard to that. Having said that, you know, if, if there are improvements in terms of things that are feasible, that, that could be done, we'd certainly want to work constructively with
Just to be clear, I'm not disputing that.
Right. No, I understand. I answered your question. Yeah.
And, uh, I'm not disputing that, um, concerns. Um, and the concerns will proven out, but we want to make sure that we're not, we're not caught surprised, but, um, those streets, I believe, have asphalt curbs, which are not conducive to organized parking, and in many cases, there's inadequate sidewalks. So, and I'm not suggesting that that all be part of town. Uh, all be part of the, the applicant's responsibility to improve, but an improvement plan, planning out an improvement plan and perhaps the design of those improvements is something that, um, will urate many of the concerns.
Understood, and we're open-minded.
Possibly will familiarate the concerns.
We're, we're open-minded if that would make people more comfortable, uh, and make the commission comfortable. Most importantly, we'd certainly be willing to work at good faith in that.
Yeah, a, a, a design would go a long way, and then town has been quite successful at getting, um, sidewalk extensions, so.
Yes.
So the answer to your question is yes, we will. Thank you.
Bump outs, is that something, we would need some approval other than us for the, for
The, the police commission right now, although we're in that area where there's going to be a new traffic authority, I'm not sure of the timing on that, but I think ultimately the traffic authority of the town, whatever that may be, previously it's been the police commission, would have to approve.
All right, you would, you would think that if we go down that route, it can't be a condition of approval, it will be a recommendation of approval.
I would think so, yes.
Um,
And a request, and, and embodied that we would, yeah, pursue it. I'm sorry.
Yeah, I would just add to that, uh, in addition to the town, uh, the comment about, uh, the bump out on Route One, that's obviously a DOT thing. I would request that you, uh, reach out to them about that. I know on, um, Stradfield Road, when they were doing the Four Corners project, there was, I don't know if it was as extensive as what would be required here, but there was a bump out there. Um, and I think part of the reason they did that was specifically to mitigate the bypasses. So, you know, it may be that that's not a concern, but, but actually something that they can look into.
Yeah, I mean, we're absolutely open to that. We don't mean to be unduly pessimistic.
But, sorry, it's a total, got nothing to do with anything, but that bump out reduces, makes parking a bigger problem at the Four Corners. I know you would love a person. So I'd hate to see that here.
So I'd hate to see that here, because parking is so limited, so if it's gonna be the same thing as Four Corners, you do that here, it's a disaster.
Um, just 'cause I know the D O T recently did a study on the post road in that area, I believe, right?
Yeah.
And you reviewed that and that's incorporated in your study analysis?
Yes.
Commissioner Brown?
Um, so regarding parking, could you just detail? Cause I don't see, uh, if, I don't know if it can be posted, just detail the current regulations we have now. What are, what, what is the parking required for residential, retail? Is there office space here also?
No.
And restaurant versus what, you're, I know you're offering seventy-one altogether for everything, right?
We have that all on a chart, don't we, do you know the page and M L A?
Chart up there, cause.
If you can just hold them land, give her the. While he's doing that, I mean, obviously, the, the restaurant, as we discussed, it's currently forty. Uh, one space for every, uh, forty, uh, feet of patron floor area, this proposes two fifty, uh, on the retail.
How many spaces would be required under our regulation versus how many spaces are being offered? I guess that's my question.
Oh, I thought you wanted to know the regulation.
Remind.
How many spa- how many spaces are required on our current regulation and how?
Versus what's proposed.
I don't know if we have it in that format or not, um.
I think it's in the chart, right?
It's in the chart. Should we show M L A, so, let me, Mark, show M L A what you're, so it can be mounted.
C dash one, one oh one. That would, we got sheets, we pull, we have our parking breakdown, uh, to answer your question about if we were to keep the regulation as it is. Um, it's one per forty, so then you would take seventeen forty-three and divided by, uh, forty square feet, so that would amount to.
Is that for the restaurant?
Correct.
Forty something.
It's a, it's, it's one, one space per forty square foot of patron area.
The chart, if you wanna look at it, everybody, while M L A's looking for.
Seventy-sixty-seven?
If you have your, your.
No.
That would be forty-four.
C dash one oh one is the page.
So, do you have that?
So this page, this is our purpose regulation, so if you want to keep, you know, the current regulation, then you would have to take our patron area. For the coffee shop or the restaurant, and then you divide that by forty square.
So how many spaces would be required?
For the restaurant, we would need, uh, forty-three point five, so that would be forty-four, uh, square feet, I mean, forty-four, uh, parking spaces. And then for the coffee shop, um, we have about, um. It's a lot less, uh, give me a second.
Is there also an office space?
No, that's, that's management spaces.
Managing maybe.
Oh, so that's two spaces, I think.
I think two, yes.
What's up there, does that show the, 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 uh, the current regulation versus the proposed?
No.
Uh.
That's, that's.
It shows, it shows the proposed, the breakdown with regard to proposed parking for each of the uses. And, and it also, you know, breaks out floor area and everything else.
Our patron area for the coffee shop is three hundred ninety-seven square feet, so you take that divided by four.
Three fifty-three.
I'm sorry?
It's three fifty-three.
Uh, and our latest point is three ninety-seven.
Oh.
So again, the coffee shop, the regulation currently would require how much, how many?
Uh, one space per forty.
So how many spaces is that?
So three ninety-seven divided by.
Ten.
Ten, ten, ten.
Okay.
Point nine, so it'll be ten.
You're giving the same numbers for the residential, the restaurant, the retail and the office, do we have separate thing for the office or no?
We do not have.
We've got a chart here that shows you what the parking is under the amendments we're proposing.
I wanna know what is under the current regulation.
With all due respect, that's, that's the number you can do, or I'll do it, but it's, we're gonna be here for a while. I mean, it's, we're, it's existing, the existing regulation, so you need one space for every forty square, forty feet of patron floor area. You need, um, three spaces, right, for every unit of residential housing. If none of these regulations change, we have forty units, that's one hundred and twenty.
Yep.
Okay, so we need one hundred and twenty for the residential, we need, how many did you say for the?
So if you.
For the restaurant?
Um, the restaurant is, uh, forty-four.
Yeah, forty-four, okay.
About ten, so that'll be fifty-four for the coffee shop and the restaurant.
What about the retail?
And then the retail, if you're using one per two hundred, um, so that will be roughly, um, sixteen fifty-seven divided by, uh, two hundred.
That's eight, I can't, eighty, eight?
The first fifteen hundred.
Under the existing.
Well, if, um, no, that would be the design commercial, uh, the center design, yeah. So if we, if we're using one per two hundred for the design commercial district, so it'll be sixteen fifty-seven divided by two hundred.
And, and, and remember that we're seeking a zone change to the center design where the parking requirement for retail is to.
That was my next question.
One space for the first fifteen hundred square feet of retail, and then for each additional.
Two fifty.
Two fifty, one additional space.
So the cur- just, that's my next question, but the current design commercial district requires how many spaces for the retail?
One per two hundred.
Well, no, the, 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 the design commercial is one per two, two, for, for two hundred. The center, the center design is the first fifteen hundred, one space, and then one space for each additional two fifty above.
How big is the retail establishment again?
Sixteen fifty-seven.
So do you divide that by two hundred, I guess?
Correct.
Yes.
How many is that, eight spaces?
Nine spaces.
Round up.
So you would need basically one twenty plus forty-four plus nine plus ten, whatever that adds up.
Yep.
In the current district, now, you're proposing to change the zone to center district, center district.
Change your regulations.
Also, changing the regulations in the center district to allow more than what it now was in the center district.
We're seeking to change the regulations, and, and the focus being here on parking. In a, in the center design business district, in accordance with the provisions of your draft plan of conservation and development. If you don't think at the end of the day, that all that work and all that time with regard to the plan of conservation and development, at least it relates to the looking at these traffic numbers as sensible. Then we, we're not, we don't have this project.
I'm not asking for opinions or what we feel like, I'm just trying to get the data.
Well, that's the number.
Okay, so the number right now is the parking that would be required for this project would be a hundred eighty-three, by my count, that's sort of a.
That's if you don't change the regulation.
That's if we don't change the reg, if we don't expand the center district to enable something of this size, cause right now.
Start a scroll and.
Right now, the center, I'm asking a question, so right now, the center district would not allow this either, probably, unless it had.
If, if, none of this works unless you amend the regulations.
To, to not only increase the density allowed in the center district, but also stretch the center district down.
I don't know if I agree with your terminology, density, I think it's a matter of do you wanna adjust your parking regulations?
Okay, I hear you, yeah, and so seventy-one is what's being offered, so.
Seventy, yes, right.
Or seven, oh, seventy, okay.
Seventy-one, seventy-one, yeah, right.
And, um, um, where do you anticipate overflow parking on the side street, they can't park on the post road, can they?
We're comfortable that the regulations that are envisioned in your plan of conservation and development draft. Provide for adequate onsite parking relative to the uses that we're proposing, that's, that's what we believe. It makes us no sense to spend the kind of money that will have to be spent to, to develop and, and build this project. If we don't have and feel we don't have adequate parking for our residential tenants. And our customers at the restaurant and the coffee shop and everything else, and we believe we do.
And, um, regarding the chain, uh, the regulation, I was looking at the language, I can't, I'm not sure if I can tell. What is the footprint of the revised new regulation, um, is it extending down? From where the center district currently ends, which is around?
It's site specific, it's not extending the zone.
No, it's, it's site specific, correct.
Site specific.
You're just.
On their side.
Right for this one spot.
And I don't think, I don't wanna take up all your time now getting into a big discussion of spot zoning, citing case law, but I would tell you it's not spot zoning. And the reasons it's not spot zoning is because spots, I said I wouldn't do this, but I will. Spot, spot zoning has to involve an extremely small parcel, I don't think this is an extremely small parcel. And number two, it has to be a, 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 a utilization of the property that is, you know, inconsistent with the character of the area that surrounds it. And I don't think the change here from design commercial to center design commercial creates a spot zoning issue.
As we said, as our, our draft says what it says, and it's not your responsibility to extend.
Right, and, yeah, that's another reason, and there is, this is, we didn't make up the idea of seeking an extension of the center design district. You know, whole cloth, it is, it is embodied in the draft plan.
Well, the draft.
It is, but I mean, the point is, I mean, they weren't, they were focused on, rightfully on their site and. Well, we had draft wise. Site specific. Which I think might be easier, but. Commissioner Brown?
Oh, yeah, for now, yeah, that's okay.
What's your C book?
Yeah, I'm regarding the traffic studies, um. Ready to the restaurant.
Speak up a little.
I'll talk louder, sorry. Not knowing which restaurants we need to be there, to me, are you basing your assumptions on? A restaurant that is open for lunch and dinner and close on Mondays? Or are you not, are you not making that assumption?
Dave, could you answer that, and, and for the purpose of the traffic study, what did we assume in terms of restaurant operation?
Right, we, um, we have a couple of choices, several choices when it comes to restaurants, most of them don't apply. Um, the two that may apply here would be a quality sit-down restaurant, table service, or a high turnover, um. Uh, restaurant, like a T G I Fridays or something, we analyze this as a, um, white table restaurant. Quality sit-down restaurant, which generates traffic late afternoon, mostly in the evening.
Like an Alto.
Yeah, I think as, as, as Mr. Andre said in his presentation, if I recall correctly. He's very sensitive ultimately in whatever restaurant tenant they would choose to be one that's compatible with the primary residential use. And he would not want a restaurant that in terms of hours of operation, noise, volumes of participation, would create problems. For his residential tenants, uh, and, and, is that, did I quote you correctly?
Correct.
So I think we are believing that, that Mr. Sullivan's analysis, you know, with a, a white tablecloth restaurant, I don't know if they have white tablecloths. But that it would be, it would be a, a dining establishment, uh, it wouldn't be a late night bar scene, because that would be counterproductive to trying to. You know, have happy tenants in the, in the residential.
Where an IHOP.
Right, where an IHOP. Thank you. For the questions, Commissioner Harrison?
I'm not sure if this is entirely pertinent, but what we're, do you have a rough time, um, you know, scheduled when the restaurant would be open and closed, I know.
So, um. We, we are obviously not going to operate a restaurant or coffee shop, um. First, we have to build a building and then find a suitable tenant, um, do we have any interest, we do. Um, but, um, at this point. It will be up to all of you guys, we not, we, we need, if you wanna know whether we have some agreement with any operator, local operator, we don't. Uh, but we do have some strong interest from local restaurant operators in this town.
Nothing's open really past nine, breaking.
Right, um, but it, it, I, as a local archi- as a local architect, my whole, uh, whole strategy with this, not just. You know, uh, looking at what the draft of the P O C D is looking to do, we also, some of the issues with small businesses. A restaurant, as you all know, you have to hire professionals, typically a developer will come before you with a project, just a box. They don't anticipate what's gonna be there, it just say, okay, approve this, there might be a restaurant, there might be some other stuff, you approve it, and then. A potential restaurant operator will come in, sign an agreement, spend money in architects, traffic engineers, attorneys, and not knowing whether this thing can get approved. Your P O C D wouldn't, try to put in place a strategy that would cut all the red tape. And us, as, as the property owner for this project and the architect, we have the luxury to put those concept. In our project to minimize all the red tape and all the cost to our future tenants, do we have someone here today, no? So that's the whole point, if you don't wanna approve it based on our regulations, then that would be up to you.
No, no, we have.
Just a question, that's all.
Thank you.
Thank you for your explanation.
Commissioner Brown?
Are you anticipating, uh, the patrons of the restaurant and the retail as being mostly people that are residing in the building, or are they coming from other places?
I think both.
I don't know how you get there if you don't drive.
Both, I think what we, we hope.
They're gonna take a bus down there.
We, much like other mixed use projects that have a restaurant use, you know, I think we hope that our tenants will. Enjoy dining there from time to time, and we hope patrons will wanna come and dine there, I mean, it's.
I mean, it could be folks from the neighborhood, folks in town, our tenants, I mean.
They're gonna be driving and parking, that's the problem with not having enough parking.
We're gonna have, well, you, you're making an assumption that we do not have enough parking, and, and if that's your assumption, then you, your job is easy here.
I'm trying to answer out of you as to.
No, I, 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 I'll give you any answer you want, I believe, and for the third time, that there is sufficient onsite parking. With regard to the proposed uses that are here, the other thing I would point out is that we will have much more, uh, sufficient onsite parking than any restaurant. That you will find in the center design business district.
This is not in the center, this is like.
It is if you change the zone.
This is like a mile away from the true center.
Right, but the point being, we have a very successful vibrant downtown, and none of the, let me, none of the restaurants. None of the restaurants in that downtown have any kind of sufficient park.
I understand.
We're gonna have seventy-one spaces onsite.
You have Sherman, you have the, you have tons of parking downtown at the train station, at the, uh, gazebo and all those other places. You don't have parking on the post road here, you only have parking in the neighborhood right behind this, on those roads, you don't really have extra parking.
Brown, if I can, I mean.
I'm asking you how to compare those two, how do you compare those, how do you compare this to downtown?
Compare those for the fourth time, saying that, I bel- it, it seems to me your mind is made up, and you're entitled to that.
I'm not saying my mind's made up, I'm only asking you to explain.
Well, I think it is, I think it is. Let me, let me. What, I will. Hold on.
I have a legitimate question.
Commissioner Brown, he's, I mean, he's been pretty consistent with his answer that they believe onsite parking is sufficient, that's up to us, or whatever, but I don't think we need to keep. Uh, going over the same routes, uh, same questions, so to speak, I mean, he's, he's been pretty clear on his position, so I mean, if you have other question, that's fine, but I think. It is, you know, whether, it's up to us for that determination, but that's his position. Commissioner Harrison?
I, I would just say, and I've driven past there, I live, don't live too far away, there are other restaurants abutting side streets over there, Tequila Revolution is one, they don't have a ton of parking. I think we should all maybe, you know, check that out, just for compare, because there are other restaurants in that area, which I don't think have a ton of parking either.
Something we can all discuss.
Yeah.
In our deliberations, all right, I mean, I think, I think you're done with your initial presentation.
Yeah, I just wanna, uh, three, three quick points, if I could, um, number one, uh, uh, you know, in the, in the commitment to efficiency and time management. That we're all moving forward with, and for the next few months, I'm not gonna do any summary now, I'll get an opportunity for a final rebuttal. In that regard, um, they, I'm sorry. Um, the, the, the other thing that I, I wanted to say is that. You know, we have our site drainage and water quality improvements, they've been reviewed and approved by the town engineering department, uh, they will, uh. You know, we will not, I know you received some public comments with regard to the site drainage and water quality improvements, I'm not gonna belabor that now, we'll deal with that on our rebuttal. Depending on what the public says, Mark, go ahead, I think you were gonna, we, we did submit some revised plans, so I think, Mark, you're gonna briefly just go over. You know, what the, the tweaks that we made here, which again, were designed, uh, to accommodate and, uh, be sensitive to. Concerns that we had heard during the course of our, uh, discourse and conversations with the neighbors, so.
Uh, so we, um, after several meetings with, um, uh, our neighbors and their steering committees and a few individuals. Um, we, we admit some. um, we, we made some offer to revise our plans, um, and we uploaded those changes. Uh, they relate to one extra parking space. If Caroline, uh, Emmeline, if you please can.
You want me to go to the table first or do you want me to go to the site plan?
I, I would, I would put the PDF, the CP version. I can just.
Yep.
And I did, uh, and we did provided a, a video simulation of that version. So if you, if the commissioners would like to see it, we can also play that.
This was all put up, uploaded and submitted about what, two weeks ago?
Yeah, so what we did, uh, with the CP version, uh, we, we arranged the floor, the ground floor a little bit, so we were able to pick um, one parking space. So now we are at seventy two. I think I have a little summary of that. So, yeah, this table, that's a comparison between the original and the CP version. And the main difference essentially, uh, the building, we reduced the overall size, uh, but the garage, uh, square footage and the footprint increased a little bit and that's allowed us to pick a parking space. So the ground floor, basically we have, uh, we have, we have eleven parking spaces in our parking garage. Um, the ground floor increased, the parking garage went from fifty four seventy six to sixty five thirty three. Uh, our gross retail went from ninety four seventy four to ninety, ninety four fourteen to ninety four seventy four. Uh, our surface parking went from nine to eight. The building setbacks remained the same. You know, great parking, that's our parking garage, that remained the same. So essentially what we did, we didn't increase the parking garage uh, basement level. We just, we arranged the first floor, the ground floor parking, uh, footprint. And we have now a total of seventy two parking spaces plus the loading area. In the upper floor, that will be S K one oh two CP. The summary of that, um, there was some concern about exterior balconies. So what we did, uh, we removed some. We had common outdoor spaces that were accessible to all our tenants and we converted, converted them into private outdoor uh, balcony where our tenant can, um, you know, plant and do a little garden depicted in those little green areas. So for example, in our original design, this was a common area accessible to all our forty tenants. Now, this is one outdoor area for this unit. This is another outdoor area for this unit and the same case, uh, for this one. And those balconies that we had initially, they are now, we moved and we only have those little Juliet balconies and railing. And no changes along Post Road. In the upper floor, so that will be S K one oh three CP, same. Um, actually, uh, Emmeline, if you can go back for a second, please.
Back one more?
Yes. So with the increase of the garage footprint, we pick up a new balcony area here. Um, so that will be accessible to this one, this unit here, and then this little area will be accessible to this unit. And this balcony is facing, uh, Lindbergh. S, S K one oh three. In our previous design, we had some porches and balcony, uh, in these areas. They're now gone. Um, no more balconies in this area, no more balconies. Upper floor, please. So what we also did, when we were talking with our neighbors, we, we, we did offer that we would, we arranged the massing of our building to only have three stories over twenty nine Fairfield Place. That's what, this is the property line for twenty nine Fairfield Place. So in this area over the garage, we only have three stories and then this area, um, twenty one ninety nine Post Road and twenty one seventy nine Post Road. And we maintain a four story buildings. Um, and this upper floor setback, some might call it a step back, but we set back the upper floor about four feet. Um, four feet from the face of the, of the, uh, wall. Uh, and then we rearranged things a little bit. Um, so now this one unit has a lot more outdoor spaces, whereas before we were using these outdoors, they were more like common areas. And then we pulled the building back from Fairfield Place where we have a larger step back. Where this area now, we have a twelve foot step back from the edge of the building along, uh, Fairfield Place. And then this area, we pushed this inward to create a more outdoor space. Um, S K one oh five. So our rooftop area, um, so there's a small reduction, so we removed some solar panel here. So our roof area is a little bit smaller because the footprint is low, um, as we go up with the footprint of the, those apartment floors, the roof, you know, shrunk a little bit. Um, so our activated areas did not change. Uh, but we also introduced this little area, little green area here where I figure we may, we may end up with like a little mini golf area. So one outcome of this whole, um, we arrangement, if, if you will, um, shifting the massing around. Now we have forty, uh, one bedrooms, no more studios. And the next page, S K seven hundred, this will show you, uh, uh, our current design uh, versus the, uh, the changes that we proposed. As you can see, this is in our current application where you can see a little bit more of the fourth floor and then this is the revised version.
The lower one, yeah.
The lower one is the revised version for you to consider. Uh, the next page, please.
Just highlight the differences between the.
Yeah. Um, so basically this upper floor stepped back further than this, 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 this upper floor stepped back further than this floor in this version. And then same thing in this area here where this, this one, as you can see where the tree is, is a little, you know, this curvature is closer in this image, whereas in this case, you, you can barely see it. So almost looks like from this area over, it's more like a three story building versus a four story building. Uh, the next page, seven oh one. This is in our current version where we have porches balcony, porches balcony, and then this is the fourth floor where it's much closer to the edge of the building. And then this is the, uh, the net result of the changes that we proposed, where we created more step back between, um, uh, our property line and we have more outdoor spaces above the garage. So essentially, a view from Fairfield Place, you'll be looking at almost a three story building. And the fourth floor is set back further from the edge of the, from the face of the building.
That height, that height is lower.
Um, at the fourth floor, so no, the, the building height did not change.
Right, but it's because you pushed it back.
It appears to be.
It looks like it's lower.
Correct, that is correct. Yes. And then this is a straight, um, elevation showing you the difference between the two. This is the original version. As you can see, these are the ba, the balconies, the porches, this is, um, property, uh, I'm gonna call it Miss, uh, Miss Porter's house. Instead of referring to the, no, this is Miss Porter's house right now. Um, in the original version, we have balconies and porches. Balcony porch is at the second floor, at the third floor, and then the fourth floor is closer. And then in this version, we remove those balconies. We have a more open space, outdoor garden area, and then the fourth floor is stepped back. And then those outdoor spaces only used by the abutting, uh, units.
The balconies are removed, so facing the house.
Correct, um, I'm sorry, which.
Facing the house, you just mentioned.
Uh, these are, these are still balconies for the, this floor.
That floor, but the higher ones.
There are, the higher ones are removed. Right, um, in our previous design, some of them were common area and now in this design, all these balconies are basically private balconies except for deactivated roof areas.
These were all things that came out of the conversations that we had over the months with the neighbors and requests that were made and, and we just determined that regardless of where this goes, we wanted to present our most constructive plan to you and that's why we did, I guess it was about two weeks ago. So just so it's clear procedurally, the revised plans that were submitted a couple of weeks ago, those are the operative plans and I apologize for any, any, uh, whatever. The other thing, Commissioner Randolph, in those revised plans, you would also ask that we do a sort of comparison of other towns. Uh, and you'll find that in there. It's a, it's a, it's a grid and we did our best to identify some other towns. Do you know what page that is?
So we, it's, um, we were asked to submit, um, our enhanced landscape plan that was submitted and um, so that will be in, uh, C one oh one point one.
It's a labeled, uh, zoning analysis, right? And you'll wanna look at that. It's, it's broken out. It's, yes, C one oh one.
Point one.
Point one.
We can go through that, I don't think.
And it's at the bottom, zoning analysis, Town of Westport.
I'm sorry, where?
If you look, it's, it's.
Separately.
It's sheet one, C one, C one oh one point one. And at the bottom of that sheet, you'll see zoning height analysis, cause that was the request, and we show Fairfield, Westport, Wilton, Darien and Greenwich.
So is that in the, you're looking in the web folder? Yes, it's, it's labeled ten, was it twelve ten, twenty twenty four zoning, uh, zoning analysis and.
Chair.
Yes. Yeah, I saw that. I was waiting, uh, let's go to Commissioner Levy. Commissioner Levy.
Yeah, Mr. Andre, with the setbacks, is there a reduction in the square footage at the fourth floor? And if so, how much roughly?
Um, I, uh, there is a reduction. So our fourth floor in our current, um, uh, design, it's, uh, it is eleven thousand four hundred twenty and in the CP version, the fourth floor is ninety eight ninety six square. So what we did, um, we shift some of the massing around. While the total square footage went up, but the upper floor got smaller.
Very good, thank you.
So just to, just to clarify, thank you for doing the zoning, so I didn't see that in the package, but to summarize, um, right now, our proposed height work is adjusted by two feet, fifty two.
Correct.
Correct.
Uh, Westport is fifty, fifty two. Uh, Wilton is forty eight or fifty eight. Um, Darien is fifty five. And Greenwich looks like it's forty seven.
So, um, well, actually, let me, let me clarify this. Town of Westport, you can get up to four stories and fifty two feet. You can also get sixty feet.
Right.
Um, in our proposal, we, we, we would like fifty two feet from, currently we have fifty feet in town.
Yes.
The Town of Wilton, we have, what we submitted to you guys, we have multiple zone. Um, you can actually do residential use in the downtown Wilton. In a center design district, a hundred percent residential. You can either go under the underdien zone where you can do four stories, forty eight feet, or you can use the overlay, you can go as high as sixty four feet or five stories. And I know Commissioner Randolph mentioned the form based zoning in, in the Town of Wilton. Um, if you have the opportunity to take a look at it, this building can actually be built based on those principles in the Town of Wilton with no problem. Same thing in the Town of Greenwich. All these towns, they have similar concept when it comes to upper floor step backs that we already have in our zoning regulation. So there's nothing really new. We're not doing anything different from what's going on with these other towns. I think the main difference here that we're looking to simplify the process for our tenant to move in. And if you change the regulation, um, if you grant us, uh, the changes that we're looking for, we'll still be in line with all these other towns. Some folks, we've, uh, made reference to the Town of Darien. We provide the data there. If some of, some of you, if you're familiar with the Corbin sub areas, you should drive by and take a look at it. You can build even a, um,
Seventy.
Seventy foot five story building. And in our project, we have more relief. So if you were to go down, there's a couple of buildings that's already up, they're right on the sidewalk. And there's nothing wrong with it.
In Darien.
In Darien. In the Town of Wilton, they actually, the way they craft the regulation, it's, um, they, they, because they wanna create more pedestrian friendly, they wanna remove the cars from the curb, between the curb and, and the retail's areas. The minimum requirement is actually ten feet and it's not even to the property line, it's to the curb. But those who look, as an architect, I have no issues designing traditional or any style. But those of us who prefer traditional, I can guarantee you, none of these town legislate the style of any building. In the Town of Wilton, for example, in the form base, if we are to adapt it, that's already dictate the out, the outcome of the massing of the building. And they have very specific requirement, whether you design a building with flat roof or you design a building with a pitch roof. Depending on what kind of element you put on the frontage of the building at the ground floor. That's already dictate the outcome of what that building should look like irrespective of the style, the actual architectural style.
Thank you. Just, and thank you for putting this up. One follow up question. So, uh, just to summarize, the information you presented here in terms of the height, the massing is for buildings in, um, the business center.
Yes.
Um, how would those areas, it's not for the whole town, obviously, right?
Correct, they're not for the whole town.
And so these areas, where, where are these areas located in these towns?
The center of towns.
Uh, like on the Post Road?
Um, that would be something similar to the Post Road, correct.
So I, I, and so in, in Wilton, it's, uh, in the, the town center and Wil, where's it in Westport, do you know?
Um, Westport, I think it would be, um, the one that I looked at is, uh, uh, Sagatuck along the shoreline. Um, Town of, um, Darien is, we actually do another project nearby that's, uh, near, um, uh, the Midwife Shopping Center and the Corbin area is right off, uh, Post Road.
Right.
On Corbin, Corbin Avenue, Post Road, and if you go further down, uh, it, it's, I would say center of town. Um, um, our project is right, it's north of the, uh, the other project that I work on now, where we are, the architect is north of the Corbin project. We're not part of that overlay zone.
If you haven't been down to Darien or if you're passing through and you wanna, I would really just recommend for contextual purposes, it's just your general planning interest. You guys are all interested in, but to take a look at that Corbin development because I think that is just some guidance or is an example of a town that's very traditionally sensitive to its character and to zoning. But also has moved a little forward thinking in terms of adaptability as we move forward. And I think it's an exciting project and I have nothing to do with it, so I'm just saying that.
Commissioner Levy, did you have another question?
Yeah, just one last question. Mr. Andre, uh, at fifty two feet, are you able to have a fifteen foot first floor on a four story building?
Um, correct. So, um, one of the key thing with all of these town, they don't have a mandated first floor. So in our regulation that we're proposing with a mandated fifteen foot floor, um, so that's kinda create a little bit of a difference, whereas whether it's Greenwich, Darien, Wilton, uh, um, so that's kinda create a little bit of a difference. Whereas whether it's Greenwich, Darien, Wilton, uh, we don't have to have fifteen feet. Can build a building, first floor can be ten feet. What I like about the fifteen feet, whether you approve this or not, um, if you think about it, it provide us, not every one of us gonna build a five, four story building, even if you have it. Currently, nobody's doing it. But what's almost guaranteed, what's gonna happen along the post road, if you want certain uniformity, the fifteen foot required mandated likely to happen. Not the, not the four story. Very few of us will be able to build a four, four or fifty two foot tall building. So yes, we, in our, in our proposal, we, we, we wanted to maintain that fifteen foot, uh, um, um, first floor height. We also created, uh, uh, those step backs with our upper floors, um, as recommended, um, when, you know, the commissioners, if you like it, fine. If you don't like it.
I understand. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, yeah, I'd like to finish up their presentation so we go to public comments. So just keep things brief, please.
Um, did you, when you compared those other towns, did you also compare, um, the traffic impact and what those houses are and things like that?
No. Commissioner Randolph's request was to look at the height.
I understand. That's my question. And, um, did you say that you added one more unit? So now it's forty one instead of forty?
No, no, I said, um, by rearranging the footprint of our ground floor, we were able to pick one parking space. So now instead of having seventy one parking spaces, we have seventy two. We, we did not increase the number of, um, residential units. What happened with the residential unit by shifting the massing around, instead of having thirty six one bedroom studios, uh, thirty six one bedroom and, and four studios, now we have, I believe, all studios. I mean, all, all one bedrooms. Sorry.
Wouldn't that be bigger though?
I'm sorry?
Wouldn't a one bedroom be bigger than a studio or no? I'm not an architect, but, yeah. So you were able to do it. But, um, and did it change the footprint of the, you said it shifted around the footprint. It didn't change the footprint of the ground floor? The size?
So the ground floor, so let me, let me correct one thing in our, in our calculation. Our seventy five point nine percent coverage, it's not the ground floor, it's the actual parking garage. Not the ground floor. So the ground floor, yes, the ground floor footprint got a little bit bigger because the garage floor, the, the parking garage is expanded.
By how many feet? Direction?
Um, towards the inner courtyard. Um.
So it made the inner courtyard smaller or did it move towards the, I'm trying to figure out, do you?
Um.
Extended inward.
Inward. So I can show you, I can show that to you. Uh, so that would be in the CP version, I'm, 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 uh, so there's no, there's no exterior footprint towards any of the neighbors, more inward.
Okay, thank you.
No, I, no, I appreciate the research on the other towns. Those are the other towns that are not. Um, this project is unique to this parcel, so.
Right.
That's all I want to say.
Did it cause we were asked?
No, I, I know you were.
Anything, please for your initial presentation or?
Yeah, the only thing I, nothing else with the initial presentation, but this, I'm in a, we're in a unique situation here. So let me just be candid with you. Oh, it, looking at the clock, it, it doesn't appear to me that I'll likely have an opportunity to speak to you again tonight. And that probably makes you glad, but it, I think we're gonna run out of time. Everything that I do and I try to do with my clients is based upon credibility and being above board. We are absolutely totally committed to this project. We hope after it's fully vetted that you will prove it on its merits. And, and there's nothing else we want here. But apropos the conversation that you had in the work session, we're approaching the moratorium. And what I don't want to happen is for us all to leave tonight, cause I don't think the hearing will close tonight. And then you're all home and you hear Fallon and Andre filed an eight dash thirty G application. What a bunch of jerks they are. Because that's not our intention. We will, if we, we do file an eight dash thirty G to protect the, ourselves with, we go to the moratorium, we will delay it as long as possible and then we will provide every extension to the commission in dealing with it because we really don't wanna do an eight dash thirty G at this location. We wanna do this development. But I didn't feel right about leaving here tonight, knowing I'm not gonna have a chance to talk with you again. And then having you find out during the month or whatever it is until we see each other again. What is he filing this eight dash thirty G when he's telling us he wants this project? But we're in a difficult spot. And, um, I hope you'll understand and appreciate that I'm telling you this just because our credibility, you is important to us.
Thank you for that. I mean, I think a lot of, we're gonna be seeing a lot of that, applications to preserve rights in the.
It's all of it.
As you said previously, uh, earlier today. So that's understood and appreciated.
I appreciate it. I thank you for your time. Thank you for your great vote.
Well, I will close the initial presentation portion of this hearing and turn it to public comment. We have a course received missions from the public via email and letters and such. We read those, uh, and consider them just as, just as the same as if somebody comes up talking. Already submitted, uh, materials, um, still come up. I'd ask you not to be, to read, which you've already submitted. You know, not, I think a great use of time. Certainly can talk, um, but I'm gonna open it up to the public. Um, I know Attorney Green, you're representing an neighbor in opposition, correct?
That's correct.
You want to proceed or do you want some public to go first? What's your preference?
Happy to do what the chair prefers. We're ready to go forward. We can wait if the chair wants to hear.
How long do you think you'd have?
Uh, probably about an hour.
Okay, that's fine. Um, I just wanted to understand that. Um, so normally it's first come, first served. I see a gentleman jumping up, we're going to his seat, going to his seat, which is fine. Um,
He's right.
Why don't we go, I, I would, I think going, uh, having the, uh, Attorney Green be able to present tonight makes the most sense. Our curfew is at ten o'clock and one year earlier, but we've been adding a lot of her on Attorney Green. I'll let, I'm gonna have you go. Let me see if anybody wants, is, kinda wants to go first. Um, but I, I would like to get through you this evening. Um, our curfew is ten o'clock. We're gonna keep to that. Um, mainly a lot of reasons because we've been needing a lot of extra, uh, times and keeping that is important for us, I think. Um, so I would like to get to Attorney Green, certainly before nine, but I will open it up to the public. Uh, first, see if anybody wants to come up and speak. I suspect this will not be our only time considering Attorney Green's time. We will be meeting again, public comment, we'll have the opportunity to come back at a later date. Um, anybody would like to go first or give it to Attorney Green? Attorney Green, I think you've been somewhat drafted of sorts to go first.
No, the folks remotely in the chat.
Um, is there people in the chat?
Because one person is asked to speak.
Let's see where we go with, uh, I like to go people in person first and only attorneys go first anyways, but I wanted to see if anybody else in person wanted to go. Maybe this is your staccato if not for tonight. Attorney Green.
Good evening, uh, Mr. Chairman, uh, members of the commission and staff. My name is Joel Green. I practice on Bridgeport, the offices of Green and Gross. Um, it's my pleasure to appear before you this evening on this application. Um, on behalf of, uh, Marie Malo, who lives on Lindbergh Road or Lindbergh Street. And, uh, I also represent an informal association of neighboring property owners who live on the three streets surrounding, uh, Lindbergh Street, um, Overlook Road and, um, Fairfield Place. And, uh,
Can you say how many in total?
I, I can't. Many.
You have one direct client at the very least.
Um, I have a liaison that I deal with. I think that we can refine that if the commission would like, uh, at a later date. But, uh,
If we need to, yeah, we'll discuss. Go ahead.
Fair enough. So, um, I really, uh, I came, uh, to this hearing this evening to, uh, sort of a, an outline, but, uh, hearing, uh, some of the comments by the applicant, uh, is really, I'm going to sort of rejuggle my presentation, um, a little bit. So I guess fundamentally, uh, the neighbors that I represent are here this evening because they are incredibly concerned, deeply concerned about the impacts of this project on their neighborhood. And honestly, I feel that we are at a, sort of a tipping point in this town from a planning perspective. And I know that this commission has spent a lot of time and a lot of effort on the, uh, revision of the P O C D. Um, I don't have to state, uh, this commission is well aware, painfully aware that the new P O C D has not been adopted. Uh, this plan really, I think, gets a, ahead of itself a bit. Uh, but, uh, you know, I, I've heard from so many people about this plan and the concerns really center on, uh, lack of adequate onsite parking and traffic issues. And certainly, uh, the mass and scale are of significant concern and what this project really means to this neighborhood. Fundamentally, these are the kinds of neighborhoods that really require the greatest care by this commission. I've been before this commission many, many times and I'm familiar with many of the members here. And we don't live in neighborhoods generally and most people in Fairfield don't live in neighborhoods that are sort of confronted with this, uh, the impact of sort of this commercial development on residential zones. And to be clear, this is a neighborhood. And I, I imagine that all of you are familiar with it and you've seen it and it is a close neighborhood. Fairfield is a town of neighborhoods. This neighborhood is one that, uh, once again is on the edge of, of commercial development, obviously. And I know that the comment is that it, it has been, uh, from the time that most of these residents moved in. But these residents count on this commission when considering plans to protect the integrity of the neighborhood. So the, I, I sort of appreciate the effort and the creativity of the applicant. And it's, and you know, there's a lot of interesting features to this application as you see it and it's kind of a shiny thing. But the problem with this plan is that it doesn't really, it doesn't respect this neighborhood. It doesn't respect the residents of the neighborhood in terms of what we will show are the impacts really on parking and traffic. Uh, it doesn't respect the planning process and I have to make this comment and I will get more deeply into the, uh, into the, you know, into the details. But it doesn't respect, respect the planning process in that this project really begins with the desire of the applicant to create a certain development on this particular property. And it's kind of backwards in terms of the planning process because what the applicant is asking you to do is to rezone this property to C B D B, uh, the center of, uh, business design. And then seeks to amend. So you're, you're, in my view, you are spot zoning this lot and I will get into the, uh, some more detail on the law on that and Attorney Fallon and I do not agree. But you are essentially rezoning this property uniquely on this stretch of the post road. And then you are adopting zoning regulations that are of impact to the larger C B D B, the, the downtown area. So it's backwards in a sense. And really it is just these, these regulations and the proposed amendments have, first of all, certainly unintended consequences, but it strikes me that in the presentation to this commission, the presentation wasn't about what the larger impacts were to the zone. The regu, the presentation was really just about this property and it was kind of funny earlier tonight. There was a discussion about how this just impacts this property, but it doesn't. So I will get into that within greater detail and greater focus. So, uh, again, uh, sort of background, uh, and, and I guess I'll just deal with a couple of details that relate to tonight's presentation. First of all, under zoning, we regulate uses. We don't regulate the user. So what's happening here is you are being asked as part of these applications for the commission to adopt a site plan that has a restaurant, that has a coffee shop and that has a retail space. And that's done in very sort of generic ways. So as you think about that, you are adopting a, or being asked to adopt a site plan that has this size restaurant on it. And i- in fairness, Mr. Andre was very forthright with the commission. It's kind of a vanilla box once it's approved as a restaurant. And you don't know what the restaurant user is. And you don't know, hopefully, these are, all of our businesses in Fairfield thrive. But I'm kind of reminded of the notion, for example, and I once had a discussion with someone who called me, who, who lived near the edge, basically complained, the fitness club, who complained that cars are parked everywhere. You basically parked in Bridgeport and walked to the edge. Uh, I mean, it's just so overrun versus a business, remember twenty four hour fitness used to be on, uh, up on Black Rock Turnpike, which just had a trickle of people. They're both gyms is my point. So when you look at coffee shops and you're adopting, uh, or being asked to consider a site plan for a coffee shop, it's a coffee shop. So what image does that sort of conjure up in your mind? Is it sort of a neighborhood quiet place where people drift in and drift out or is it a Starbucks? It's the use, it's not the user. So as you consider these, these sorts of, uh, the amendments that are proposed, including these, these parking amendments and that sort of thing, please understand the potential consequences of what you're looking at because once again, it's the use, not the user. Uh, I've already covered, uh, oh, by the way, uh, attorney, I'm sorry, uh, Mr. Andre indicated that it's not a bar. Well, I presume that the restaurant will have a bar and restaurants do have bars. So it's being approved as a restaurant. Fairfield doesn't really have a really tight distinction between what constitutes a bar and what constitutes a restaurant with a bar. So I, I just, uh, wanted to get into that. Uh, just, uh, I'm just gonna address some of these, uh, the comments tonight. Uh, this notion of looking at the, at what towns allow in terms of height. And I know the commission asked questions. There was not enough context in terms of sort of how these heights are, uh, what, sort of what the other factors are that factor into allowing these heights. So I'd be careful not to simply say that Westport allows sixty feet or allows fifty feet. And I presume that the, the comment was about the Hamlet, which is this new limited development down on Riverside. And I think you'll find that Westport doesn't just simply allow, uh, sixty feet or fifty or sixty feet of height everywhere. So there's a lot of context in these sorts of discussions. And I'm sure that if we wanted to take the time, we could cherry pick towns that have a, a much lower maximum height. So I'd, I'd urge the commission to avoid that sort of analysis. But going back to, uh, going back to my initial comment, we are at this tipping point and we need a much larger and more expansive planning process. Everyone knows that there's too much traffic on the post road in front of the site. And every Friday, every afternoon, in the middle of the afternoon, and I'm frequently driving back, you can be backed up all the way past the mobile station when you're trying to get to the center of town. And everyone recognizes that. So it's of great concern to these neighbors that you're potentially just adding to, uh, that volume. And over the many years that I've appeared before this commission on land use matters, I have never seen an application, a, a commercial application in this town where a, a consultant, a traffic consultant for the applicant got up and said that this will incrementally affect a level of service or the level of traffic in an area. And yet, here we sit. So I just wanna point that out. So what I'm gonna do is we're gonna get into some of the nuts and bolts. So what I'm going to do is, we're going to get into some of the nuts and bolts, uh, in my presentation. Uh, I'm going to call on Devin Santa, who had, uh, provided the commission with a, a written, uh, document, and I'll call Michael Monteleone. We'll sort of get into some of the site plan issues, and then, uh. I will, and some of the traffic issues, obviously, and I will, uh, then address, uh, some of the issues on the text amendment and the map amendment, so I'll call up Devin Santa.
Thank you, Chairman, thank you commissioners.
So Devin, if you could just briefly, uh, so Devin appears as both, uh, a neighborhood resident and also as a professional consultant, and, uh, I would just ask that you, uh, tell the commission a little bit about your education, training and experience, uh, as an engineer.
Certainly, uh, and just by way of introduction, Devin Santa, 10 Overhill Road. Um, my background, I've been a practicing civil engineer for the past 25 years. Uh, I have a bachelor's degree in civil engineering, a master's degree in civil engineering, and I'm licensed in 13 states.
Okay, so, uh, at my request, uh, did you review the, uh, the application and supporting plans?
Yes, I did.
And what were you tasked with doing?
Just providing an overall review, review on impacts to parking and the site civil design elements.
All right, maybe you just want to go through your report.
Of course, uh, am I able to, uh, Emma, can you bring up the presentation? Yes, please.
I was waiting for you to give me the nod.
The nod. Of course, I can't read any of that, but I got what I have here. Um, so, uh, yeah, thanks for the opportunity, I have a presentation, I submitted comments as well. Um, you know, a little bit about my background.
Can we find this on what, what's the document name?
I think it was emailed to us.
It's in this morning?
Yeah.
If, if you're looking in the web folder, under Neighborhood Correspondence, and it's, I think it's, I can, I can come around and.
D S.
Okay.
D S presentation.
Yeah, and, and, and it's. As far as, from, from my review, I, I'd recommend denial for the application we see at hand for a few reasons. One is the non-compliance to current zoning regulations. Notwithstanding compliance to, to draft regulations, it doesn't comply to current regulations. Uh, from my interpretation, it, uh. Is drastically shortened off-street, uh, parking. The side streets cannot safely accommodate the overflow parking, which can reasonably be anticipated. Uh, I also noted some apparent inconsistencies or perhaps errors in stormwater design, and those, the culmination of those four items is going to impact the neighborhood irreparably and cause, uh. Damage to quiet enjoyment of those, of those homes and properties. So Emma, if you go to the next slide. And I'm going to go skip through these real quickly, th- this is the zoning table, and the point number one is with respect to non-compliance to zoning regulations. This is the zoning table that was included on the survey as part of the, uh, application materials. Now, I, I, I know it's, it's somewhat confusing because there's four columns there, and really the columns that matter are, are the, are the D C D column in comparison to the D C D column. So if you skip to the next, um. Slide. Those two columns, th- those are in context to what may be approved under draft regulation, and, and I noted in the, in the last hearing last month, there was some questions and, and, um. Questions from the commission to the applicant as far as what changes were being made. If we go to the next slide. We can see very, very distinctly what's being made, and the, the ask is, is somewhat significant here in as much as it's looking to change side setbacks from 25 feet, 10 feet, it's looking to increase the building height, uh, from 40 feet to 49 feet, almost a 20% increase, and it's looking to, uh, increase the floor area ratio from 150% to 250%. Result in a, uh, 67% larger building. So i- in total, those, those are significant changes. And. It's. These are changes that, that if the text amendment goes through, will go through the entire design commercial district. And have far-reaching ramifications, so that, that's a consideration that needs to, to go into this, um, this project. Moving on.
Design commercial district or design business district?
Design commercial district. This, the center design business district is what's potentially proposed here as part of the P O C D, but that's not what this zone does.
I think even the applicant acknowledges that if we don't do the zone change amendments, that this can't go through.
Correct, but.
That's pretty.
That, oh, sorry.
Well, I was going to say, that's pretty, that's pretty obvious, I think, so that's why I was questioning, I thought you meant the built center, uh, design business district, but okay.
But at, at the last, the last month's meeting, there was some questions about what the actual changes were with respect to zoning, and these are that. Uh, to, to move along and, and you could skip two slides, Emma. The next is respect, respect to the parking. And we touched a bit on that, and, and I think I have some answers to some of the questions that the commissioners were asking. But this is an excerpt of the applicant zoning, uh, sorry, the applicant's parking table. And, um, there's no, there's no comparison to what the current regulations are within, within that parking table, so it's hard to get context for what that change is. But. Well, effectively, what's going to happen, th- there's a significant change to the parking regulations, these are going to be applicable throughout the entire town. And the change is really going to be reviewed as part of the, the P O C D, as, as part of this, uh, component, and, and I know the P O C D language, it, it specifically does not say implement this parking, this is explore this, and I think that's an important thing in some of the exploration that we'll do as part of this effort. Uh, Emma, I could skip, I think, to.
Can you just clarify, are you talking about the current 2016 P O C D or the unadopted?
The unadopted, the unadopted language recommends exploration of, uh, parking requirements that are consistent, next to them. Uh, that are consistent with, uh. What the applicant has proposed. Um. So I'm going to, I'm going to touch further on that, but a couple of things with respect to the parking and what's, what's necessary here. I, I know within your own zoning regulations, what's stated, um. With respect to parking is that there's an obligation to improve pedestrian vehicular circulation, I added the emphasis there in that first statement. Um, and I would contend as we look through this, that this project does not do that. Furthermore, I would note. Um, in your own section, uh, zoning regulations 10 point, uh, 12.10.3.1, parking study would be required for projects in the, um, center of design business district. So it seems that one hand, the applicant wants to have that district moved over for, for convenience, but when the requirement comes up of, uh, including the parking study, and that parking study would need to demonstrate the adequacy and viability, and I, I haven't seen anything in any of the materials provided that would do so. Um, we could skip, Emma. Um, we can skip to the next slide. This is narrative from, from your, your P O C, the draft P O C D language. And a couple of things of note in this, it, it, it references that. The parking requirements for restaurants are, uh, greater than those of offices, but it states as, as a, as a fact, and, and the parking requirements, I think, appropriate would be so, and. Well, been to restaurants, we've gone all been to offices, you can see the density in restaurants is often more, uh, hence why that requirement is such, and I think if you look at, we talked about comparison of other municipalities, uh, for heights, if you look at comparison of other municipalities for parking, you'll see that restaurants have more parking than offices, so that's an interesting comparison in the P O C D, and I don't know what it's apropos of. Um, similarly, I, I think the important point i- on the right-hand side of the screen there is really explore these options. The, the P O C D doesn't even say, the draft P O C D doesn't say implement these options. It says if we want to, uh, allow for denser parking, we can explore these options, but I, I am unaware of any exploration that's been done as part of this or any other application. This table here answers the question that I believe was asked by Commissioner Braun of how many spaces would be required under current regulations compared to what we have currently, uh, proposed in front of us. The, the answer to that, by the calculations that I did. 201 spaces would be required under, uh, the current regulations. The commission does have the ability. To reduce spaces for outdoor dining and reduce spaces for housing. Down to, uh, from three to 1.5 spaces, so on the high end is 201 spaces, at the low end, it's 127 spaces. If we, uh, move along, Emma, can you compare the next slide? This is the applicant's, um. Table, or it, it's my, is my interpretation, the applicant's table, I, I do know with respect to, um. Uh, with respect to retail, it should be one, they have a list of one space for 250, and it should be one space for 200, so there's, there's a difference in our counts, but in my check of that. But the to- the total is 71 spaces in, in their count. Again, if we go to the next slide, you'll see what the, what the difference is between those, uh, imperatives. But we can tell we're, we're only accommodating for between the 35 and 56%. Of the, uh, parking as mandated by town zoning regulation. So I think we can go to the next, uh. When I look at that and, and just kind of put it to a straight face test, we, we would say we'd have, we'd have seven spaces for 132-seat restaurant, it's 90 indoor seats and 42 outdoor seats. Uh, I, I, th- those spaces wouldn't accommodate the staff. Similarly, we'd have two spaces for the cafe. Those are the dedicated spaces per the text amendment, that again, would be enforced throughout the town with the adoption of this application. I, I, I would contend this needs some, some very, very careful thought for adoption. I would go back to the statement in the, in the draft P O C D about the exploration of this, again, that's explore, not implement. Approval of this would be tantamount to implementing this prior to exploration. So i- in any engineering effort, it's important to verify and validate. What do these numbers mean? I told you what they are against our own town regulations, what does this mean against, um, actual, actual projects? And we have the, call it the good fortune to have two test cases, um, relatively immediately adjacent to this property, we have, uh, Gruel Britannia next door, and we have Geronimo 500 feet. Um, we can see both of those, uh, properties, uh, Gruel Britannia in red and Geronimo in blue. And, and what I want to do in this case is because I have direct observation of these, uh, sites, I can do the parking counts there, and I can see how actual reality would line up against text amendment, uh, drafts. I went to the, um, tax assessors, I got the square footages of the buildings, I estimated 75%, it's patron area. And I created, uh, a table on the next sheet. That shows several things, it shows the, um. Spaces required. Or the, uh, regulations. Next column shows the spaces provided in the lot. The next column is observations that, that I've, I've directly seen. Followed by the spaces that would be granted by text amendment, and then what that parking shortfall would be. And versus the town requirement and versus observations. Again, this is done as a means to validate what we have in front of us, and it's being done at comparable facilities in the same, uh, vicinity. So what we could see by town regulation at Gruel Britannia, we would need 25 spaces where only eight are provided. Regularly, you can go there, count the cars, you'll see them at Fairfield Place, you'll see them in the eight spaces that are, are currently allotted to the, um. Uh, on, on the applicant's property. And, um, we can note that with the text amendment. Uh, ratio, we would only have 14 spots, didn't say that it would be adequate. So you can see we're only meeting about 16 or 17% of that demand, depending on what measure you use. It, it's well under the actual observations. Um, one data point isn't worth an awful lot, we fortunate to have two data points, and, and if we look at Geronimo. Uh, if we do the takeoff in the square footage, compare it to town regulations, it would require 85 spaces. We note there's 62 spaces, um, in that lot. It would only need 14 spaces that text amendment went through. We can tell by direct observation, the Harry's Corner lot puts out signage to make sure the Geronimo overflow parking doesn't go there. I talked to both the owner of Harry's, uh, liquor store and the off-duty police officer who controlled, controlled traffic there, that they did have to manage overflow parking from Geronimos on a regular basis. So again, it would, it would validate that, uh, the P O C D parking limit is not sufficient for direct observation of, of local facilities. The last comparison I did, uh, I used the applicant's, uh, traffic study, I know it was a traffic study, not a parking study. But, uh, of note, it, it has trip generations per the I T E. And I felt it would be a worthwhile comparative point to include as well, since it's the applicant's data. Uh, if we skip to the next slide. The, um, this shows the vehicles entering and exiting, uh, if we look at the cafe, it was 50 entering, 50 exiting for two spaces. Could look at this one or two ways, how, how quickly would people get to be in and out of the store, or out of the cafe? For these spaces to work, or how many spaces would you need based on a certain time? So if you have the two spaces, people would have to park their car, get out of their car. Get in line, order their coffee, get their coffee, return to their car and leave in 2.4 minutes. Otherwise, those two spaces would be inadequate. If we look at more reasonable times of, of, uh. 10, 15 or 20 minutes, you could see we come up with a very quick parking shortfall of between seven and 15 spaces. Just because those two spaces aren't going to be adequate for the demand as shown by the trip generation. Uh, if we do the same thing for the restaurant, that shows 25 entering, 15 exiting, that, that would result in, in a 17-minute. Time, get out of your car, get a drink, order your appetizer, get a salad, get your entree, have a cup of coffee. I, I, I don't think it's going to happen. If we look at more reasonable times, 60 to 90 minutes, you could see the parking shortfalls there in a range of 18 to 36, um, spaces. So. Through each of those measures, either looking at Gruel Britannia, looking at Geronimo, looking at, uh, I T E trip generation, we can see pretty clearly that, that this is not, the parking provided will not meet the, uh, the demand. So Emma, if you could go to the next. So. That shortfall, between 56 or 130 spaces, something in that range, and what we know is we don't have other parking spaces here. This isn't, this isn't the downtown, we don't have Sherman Green, we don't have the train station parking, we don't have the surface lot near Flesko Funeral Home and, uh, Mecca, we don't have the parking garage behind the bookstore. There's, there's no comparable comparison, the only parking, literally the only parking available is this neighborhood. There's nothing across the street, there's no, no parking on the shoulder across the street. Harry's lot is full, and they're trying to turn away the Geronimo for us. So what I wanted to show next was some graphics of what the neighborhood would look like with this overflow parking to give context. So Emma, if we move. Uh, what I did is I took a, uh, Bing aerial, um, and I put cars that, that are commonly on the streets, either from just, uh, overlaying what was on the aerial or cars I see commonly in my, in my day-to-day, but they're nine by 18 blocks representing the, um. Cars currently in the neighborhood. If we go to the next slide, this is going to show. Eight cars displaced from, uh, Gruel Britannia would then be populated the neighborhood, that it displaced from the parking spaces. If we go to the next slide. This is going to show the 56 additional cars, uh, out into the neighborhood, and you could see Lindberg Place would be basically parallel park both sides of the street for the full street for the full duration, same with Fairfield Place and about half of Overhill. Go forward one more slide. This would be the impact of the town zoning regulations. That is the town Fairfield zoning regulation parking requirements for this facility, accounting for the 71 cars on site. So.
Explain the color of things.
Colors, it's different. Green is what's commonly on site, yellow is what would be displaced from the eight spaces that Gruel-Batania currently has on the Sunshine Development Site. Red is the low end of the town of Fairfield zoning regulations, and purple is what would be required. It's the culmination of all of it. And note that all of those graphics include 71 cars at the site. These are the additional cars. So that shows something, and it shows how the neighborhood would be impacted. I think we can agree on that. What I want to bring this to now, Emily, if you just leave that up for one sec, is I want to shift a bit to safety, and what does this really mean? Okay, the road, why can't we just park on the road? Let's think about the safety for a bit. The town has signed the Vision Zero pledge, read about that in the Connecticut Post the other day. That's a commitment to eliminate traffic deaths. Initially, the town has the Complete Streets program in place, and if you read through the Complete Streets, it notes there's been 376 pedestrians killed between 2005 and 2014, and of those are primarily children and seniors. And we have a tragic fatality 100 feet from the site where a pedestrian was hit by a vehicle. So we're not entering theory, we're not discussing theory here, we're talking about real-life issues of changing a neighborhood and putting more cars into it than it can possibly handle. So I want to look at what that impact would be on the roadways. If we move to the next slide. This shows, there's two documents in the town of Fairfield that dictate road widths. One is your subdivision regulations that stipulate a 50-foot road width. The other is a parking road width, and I took this out of, excerpted this out of the zoning regulations, which shows a 24-foot traveled way and nine-foot parking spots. I don't even think that's interpreted to be a road, I think it's just meant to be parking, so slower traffic, but they were the two data points I could use from the town. So 42 feet at the barest of minimums, and 50 feet is the recommendation. So if we go to the next slide, these are the road widths on Fairfield. The first column is the road widths, and those are measurements that I took in my neighborhood. And you can see none of them are close to the 50-foot width. The second column shows their shortfalls, the 50-foot width. Fairfield Place is even half the width needed. None of them are sufficient to meet the width for the 50-foot subdivision requirement, or even the lesser parking requirement in the zoning regulations. So we have a neighborhood here. We don't have sidewalks, we don't have great lighting, we don't have sufficient roadway widths, we have children playing here, we have bikers, we have pedestrians, we have dog walkers. As I can tell, we're asking for a problem to put these cars on the street with that sort of density. It doesn't, it doesn't work, it's not going to happen, and we're going to create a dangerous situation with this development. So I want to shift gears from parking here, and I want to talk about the civil matters, but I think before I shift gears fully, I hope I've demonstrated the concerns here, that P O C D parking limit really needs to be challenged and understood, because from my observations, it doesn't quite work, certainly not in this circumstance. And the streets cannot handle the overflow of parking. There's no reasonable other location for this parking to go. Moving along, I also looked at the civil design aspects of this, and what I started looking at was surface coverage ratios, and I noted in the applicant's architectural drawings a 75.9% coverage. When I took that and I went into the stormwater study submitted by the applicant, if you go to the next slide, Emily, that notes 70% coverage. There's a difference in calculation there, in water quality design, or stormwater design, that impervious is the key component, one of the key components determining the volume. So that got me thinking and looking, and I went and actually took the PDF available online and digitized it myself, and came up with a third number, and the number that I got was closer to 80%. But in any case, there's three numbers that came out. So that would need to be further validated.
If you're saying groundwater retard volume, W Q B, that's, just to make sure that stands for, that's water quality volume?
Water quality volume.
And Q, or G W Q? Okay, just to make sure that we're on.
Yeah.
All right, very good, thank you.
So, yes, skipping ahead to that slide.
I know where that's at.
Yeah, I think so. So I see some differences, I don't know what the differences are related to, but I know there's differences, at least even in the applicant's own, and by my own calculation, I came up with a different number. So moving forward to the next slide, I looked at the calculation, and the calculation in yellow is what was provided in the application, and I went to the Stormwater Quality Manual, the current version, and the calculations are different, which is, I don't know what the difference is, I don't know why one was used, but I would ask that that be understood and clarified. But in total, if you go to the next slide, you'll see that using the calculation in the current Stormwater Quality Manual, and it's an 80% coverage that I calculated, it would increase the water quality volume by 47%. So a significant difference, and again, we're packing a lot onto the site. I think it's a small site and a big increase. So I got to looking further, and each step, I started peeling this onion back, the more I looked at it, the more things I saw. So I said, okay, how's this managed? There's a reserve capacity. So I went to look at the design a bit further, and the infiltration rate in the design shows six inches per hour infiltration rate. And I didn't know anywhere that was supported by any testing in the study. There were percolation tests that were shown on the civil drawings, but in the Stormwater Manual, it states specifically that percolation tests shouldn't be used for stormwater infiltration rates, and that they would overestimate them. So I think there should be clarity given on that. Moving forward, as I looked at the stormwater system, and the way this is from my interpretation, you have three galleries, retention, infiltration galleries, that line the east and south sides of the property, they're labeled 1P, 3P, and 4P. And they fill, my interpretation, the design intent is they fill in series, that 1P will fill, it'll overflow then into 2P, or 3P, and then it'll overflow into 4P. So after 4P, it would flow to a level spreader, which is near the property line, which would be an at-grade component. So when I looked at that, and I looked at the calculations, I noted, if you can go to the next slide, that the peak water level, there's something that comes out of the calculations called the peak elevation, which shows how high the water level is, and I looked at 1P, the peak elevation was shown as 4.15, above its invert, and its invert is the bottom of the infiltrator. So it's 4.15 feet above the bottom of the infiltrator, the infiltrator's at elevation 12, and grade is at elevation 3. So that would show that the infiltrator is underwater, that it has been exceeded, and is actually, water is above the top of the infiltrator. And that same case follows for 3P and 4P as well, that shows that the insufficient capacity. So, just so I can stop you, what you're saying is that.
Depth of the system it's sitting in, groundwater.
Groundwater would crest the top of the infiltrator, but with this design, it would come above grade, they're not deep enough.
What does the infiltrator do? No questions, please.
So I thought that was strange to see those results, so I thought, I sought to check that and verify that as well. So I had an associate run a HydroCAD model to mirror this. So Emily, if you go to the next slide. It's going to be hard to see here, but on the left is the applicant's stormwater study, and on the right is the HydroCAD model that I had run. And if you look, if you can see, they have the same peak water elevation. But if you look, there's a series of warnings over the one on the right. And if you go to the next slide, you can see what those warnings are, but this is the 1P case that we sought to check, and it shows the peak elevation of 3.45, it shows it 1.45 feet above the gallery, and there's a series of warnings that show just that. HydroCAD has a feature, call it good or bad, where those warnings can be shut off. I don't know what was done in the civil, all I can point out is, as I looked through this, each step of the way, I found inconsistencies or perhaps errors, but when I held a model with the same inputs and outputs up, it came with error solutions. So that would be cause for concern with the retention of water here. Now, the other concern I'd have, if we go to the next slide, is, as I mentioned, the galleries will fill in series out to 4P, and after 4P, they flow out to a level spreader, which is at grade. But grade pitches off to the southern property line, you can see that it's located right near the southern property line. So I would, it would be reasonable to have some clarification that there wouldn't be adverse impacts from that level spreader if it was to overflow onto the existing property. Moving on to the next slide, this is parking lot, parking level drainage, and I noted that the stormwater drainage is the parking level, whatever stormwater might get down there, snow melt on cars, or something goes down the ramp, is tied into the sanitary storm system, not a stormwater system. I don't believe that's compliant with your regulations. Sure. So I want to talk a little bit, I ran through a bunch of technical stuff on the civil that causes me concern, I ran through a bunch of the parking stuff.
Before we move on from civil, let me, are you moving on from civil?
Yeah.
Okay, let me ask a few questions on civil.
Yeah.
Did you ever have any discussions with the town engineer about this?
No.
That's fine, just ask it. What, you've noted potential inconsistencies, though, but maybe or not, I don't know yet. What is that due to the system itself? Do you believe that it is within a margin of error, or do you believe it's faulty?
I don't want to state one where, it seems like something is funny with the system as, as I went through each layer, it.
You're noting, I didn't, but you're noting inconsistencies, and your testimony is just noting the inconsistencies, but you had, it's not as if you went further with the analysis to say it's in the margin of error, or that it's a faulty system, you know the inconsistencies that need to be addressed.
From my interpretation, the infiltrator is underwater, the water is above grade, it doesn't work, from my interpretation of the applicant's.
That's fine, I just wanted to make sure.
And there might be reasons that my interpretation hurts from the design intent, but from what I can see, it doesn't, it doesn't work, based on the design drawing as it's.
That's fine, I just wanted to make sure I understood what, if he was just pointing out, why I said what I wanted to be clear on, so go ahead, thank you. Commissioner Porcello.
Yeah, so, so it sounds like some of what you observed here, all inconsistencies and others may be flaws with the line, the infiltrator I'll take as an example, when you were describing what you thought was the issue with that, it sounded like maybe it had to do with the depth of where they're.
I'll, there's a lot that goes into any of these designs, and I'm not going to say that I designed anything here. I reviewed these things, and I see things that don't make sense to me. It's possible that their site civil would come here and say, no, these are buried deeper, the inverts weren't changed. I don't know what the.
I'm sorry, let me, so I guess the question I was really getting at is, if everything is as you observed, and there's not some explanation, there's just a flaw, are these, are some, or all of these observations things that, again, going with the infiltrator, would it be a matter of burying it deeper, or is it just an unfixable problem, or how would you classify what you observed?
Those problems are fixable problems, I don't know. I don't know what, all the way back to the infiltration rates, I don't know how the infiltration rates were calculated. If the infiltration rates are off, then I don't know, it could be a question of burying deeper, that might be, answer it. But I think we could say that there's not a lot of infiltration space left on this But I suppose my point would be, as a civil engineer, I see issues in this design that should be resolved prior to implementation.
All right, thank you. Thank you.
Emily, if you can go to the next slide.
Compared to the infiltration, what percentage of the site right now is permeable?
According to my take, 20%, according to the applicant's.
Existing conditions.
Oh, I'd have to check, I don't know.
Live there, zero?
Is it impermeable? There's a house there, there's a store there. It's, it is on the.
Impacted, yeah. So is there any controlled runoff right now, as an engineer?
I don't know, the house might, the leaders might go into grade, I don't know. I don't know. And the impervious amounts are listed on the applicant's survey.
Go ahead.
So I touched on a lot of technical matters, and I suppose just want to put my neighbor hat on for a second, and I believe the culmination of this will irreparably harm this neighborhood. And I know in the applicant's introduction letter, that, quote, "This will have an extremely positive impact on the area," and I question, will it really? Will that parking be a positive impact? I don't know, I don't believe it will be. The one thing, again, being an engineer, I look for hard data points. You live in a desirable area, and these houses don't transact very frequently. The house that I live in was owned by Chief Dave Russell, the owner of the house, there's pictures on the wall out there, is a former fire chief of this great town. And the house next to us was in one family, it was just sold a few years ago after being in the family for 80 years. They don't transact much. Since this development's come up, three houses have been on the market and sold. This is not common, and I understand that all of them were related to this development, and the concerns associated with this development. So we have a project as proposed that has, it has issues as I see it, it's not zoned for this area, and I think some of that is the contributing factors. If it was designed per the current D C D zone, these wouldn't be issues we'd be having. The off-street parking, I don't believe is sufficient, when you compare it to your own zoning regulations or direct observations. With the neighborhood streets as narrow as they are, I don't believe they can safely accommodate the overflow parking, and we're going to contribute to a hazardous condition if this is approved. I believe there's inconsistencies and/or errors in that stormwater plan that needs to be resolved for the satisfaction of your commission in the town. And I think in the totality, it's going to cause harm to this. And I think in in the totality, i- it's going to cause harm to this neighborhood. Um, so i- in conclusion, I I I would ask that this application not be allowed to proceed as proposed. And and back in compliance to to your own regulations.
Thank you. Um, I'd like to call uh now uh Michael Monteleone of Simco. Engineering. Um, we have submitted uh a C V for Mr. Monteleone. It's in the record. Would you just uh? Benefit of the commission, this was submitted uh this morning and for the benefit of the public, Mr. Monteleone, would you? Briefly describe all your name and address, but uh also your education training experience.
Sure. So I'm with Simco Engineering. We're looking at one oh four West Forty Street, uh New York City, um suite four thirty-three. I have thirty-seven years of uh transportation planning and traffic engineering experience. And I have a master's degree, University of North Carolina Chapel Hill, in in uh transportation planning. I'm also a member of the uh Institute of Transportation Engineers, an active member in that association. So I have a long history with doing this kind of work.
Now, uh, Mr. Monteleone, are you are not a licensed professional engineer in the state of Connecticut, is that correct?
That is correct.
Uh, but has your methodology, your findings and your report been reviewed by a licensed professional engineer within Simco? And uh also, in terms of the sort of the task, and we'll get into that in a moment. Are they necessarily related to local state law or these general principles of traffic engineering that you will be uh presenting on to the commissions?
Yeah, so so Devin took the approach of more of a traffic engineering um and code. Perspective. I'm gonna take more of an operations perspective, you know, does do what makes sense, what doesn't? And and how uh we came up with certain numbers um based on reviewing of the um applicant's traffic report. And what specifically were you tasked with, Mr. Monteleone? So we're looking at uh site circulation, uh parking, uh trip generation. Safety, uh generally everything that was in the traffic report plus things that we felt weren't in the traffic report that needed to be um investigated. So so basically, so basically I did my own parking analysis in lieu of uh it not being as part of the submission by the applicant. Um, so we came up with our own um assumptions and and our own uh using our own. General principles that we typically use in these types of studies.
And what were your findings and? Yes, yeah, what were your findings and conclusions in?
So could we pull up um?
My report, please.
Um, yeah, see, yeah, well, I'll get to the table, but that's really the focus of of one of the things I wanna talk about. So I'll start with uh vehicle circulation. So to start with, uh the way the site is set up. There's only one location where um you have, you only do pickup and drop off at the site. You feel that that's deficient for several reasons. Um, number one is currently, as you know, since the pandemic. Placematization of um. Different types of um of vendors who typically visit residential sites throughout the day, whether it's FedEx, Amazon. DoorDash, uh Uber and Lifts. So there there really is only one spot where all of that can happen on the site. And if, and if it didn't happen on the site, um basically three things can happen. One is that they'd have to go out onto Fairfield Place, which is uh to accommodate these activities, these commercial activities. Where um it's really not set up for um staging uh and parking of of vehicles. Um, they'd have to loop around and through the site until a space became available. Or that um. They'd have to go to another local street um to uh to stage until a space became became available. In terms of traffic volumes, um we reviewed the trip generation rates that were used as part of the study. Um, something that came up earlier that I wasn't aware of in reading the traffic report. Is that it wasn't clear that the coffee shop and the restaurant were fluid in terms of their use. Um, we we reviewed them through the lens that they would be a high-quality restaurant, which has a lower trip generation rate than a high turnover restaurant. And that the coffee shop would be a mom and pop coffee shop, local, and not a Starbucks or a Dunkin' Donuts or any of those types of. If if those come in, it it it's a deal changer with the with the traffic. Because it's gonna generate heck of a lot more traffic than what's being stated in the report currently. That was not part of my report, but I didn't realize that those things were still uh up in the air and still in play. Um, so I I wanted to offer that as part of my testimony. Um, also, as I mentioned before. Um, you know, with the Uber, the Lifts, the the DoorDash, the uh Amazon, the FedEx, the U P S trucks. Which have really increased tremendously since the pandemic, uh the I T A trip generation manual hasn't caught up to that. There hasn't been new studies that have been done and it hasn't been updated since the pandemic. So we feel that that number's gonna be jacked up quite a bit um when the new edition of the I T E trip generation manual comes out in the next year or two. Once they have data post-pandemic. So I want you to be aware that that's a possibility, that these traffic volumes could increase. Um, as a result of of those things being underrepresented in the current I T E trip generation manual.
What was the current, what was it last updated?
Um, before the pandemic.
I thought it was like updated continuously, like.
Well, it it is, but they don't publish it continuously. So, yeah. The eleventh edition now.
It's in two thousand sixteen.
Uh, I forget the the year seventeen or eighteen. I I can't remember the exact year, but it was definitely before the pandemic. Oh, sorry, I got a question, sorry. Okay, in 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 terms of safety, I want to echo what um what Devin had said. Uh, previously in his testimony that there was a fatal crash that occurred on on the post-road um. In January of, oh, yeah, sorry, in May of twenty twenty-three, which is within a timeframe. In which they did their uh crash analysis and that was not reported. And that's a significant event that happened very close to the site. Okay, in terms of parking, so I'm gonna look at this, like I said, from more of a. Operations perspective, you know, what makes sense, what? When you have X number of seats in a restaurant, what does that mean? Uh, you know, not looking at the trip generation. Because trip generation and parking are completely different. And and the reason they're different is because A, you have employees who park for six, eight, ten hours a day in the same spot. So that spot is continuously occupied, whereas in the trip generation manual, it's only the peak hour that they're. The peak hour in the A M, the peak hour of the P M that they're that they're looking at. Um, also, it doesn't take into account dwell time at the site. So um different land uses have different dwell times and I'll get into those um in the table uh when we get to that. Um. So in in terms of my review, um the cellar level has fifty-three parking spaces. And the street level has eighteen, so that gets you to the seventy-one total. So the first, um, the first thing, I looked at three different things. I looked at. Where could parking happen off the site and 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 how usable that would be? The second thing I looked at was was um parking supply. How many parking spaces theoretically could you have, including the onsite and the off-street parking locations that we felt were suitable for? For parking off the site. And then the third was to look at the demand of the parking. You know, what would this site demand in terms of um, you know, in the A M and the P M peak hours? How many spaces would you need to accommodate everybody, uh especially, you know, the employees? And and once you do that, then you can then layer that and see, we have X number of spaces, we have X number of of demand for spaces. Where do they intersect and 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 what's the difference? So. And looking at the adjacent streets to the site, Fairfield Place is very, very narrow, twenty-three feet wide. Um, as Mr. Santa mentioned, you know, in it's it's usually about forty, forty-two feet. That could, that that's the bare minimum to accommodate two-way traffic and parking on both sides of the street. So you're way uh deficient in terms of um being able to handle it. Twenty-three feet really only handles two-way traffic. Doesn't, it doesn't accommodate any on-street parking at all, at least at least safely anyway, where cars are not. Driving down the street and having to meander around to the other side of the the street to avoid um, you know, the the vehicles that are parked. Um, so even in the in the uh site plan I I saw from the applicant. They're precluding parking on the on the east side of the street along the uh the boundary of their property. It's already precluded on the. On the west side of the street. There's no parking zone along the entire west western edge of the uh of Fairfield Place. Um, we did find that there is on-street parking available on the south curb lane in front of the site. Provided that um that there would be no um fire hydrants placed in there, which would preclude parking. There's enough room for about seven on-street parking spaces along the post-road. On the north side, it's an active travel lane, so there would be no available parking um as far as that's concerned. Moving um to the to the east. Okay, Lindberg Street is is thirty-three feet, so it's a little bit wider. Um, so you could probably squeeze parking on one side of the street there. Um, uh, that's about all you could you could um allow and uh, you know, to safely allow um bi-directional traffic on there. Um, so in 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 reviewing um the applicant's site plan. Um, there appears to be two parking spaces that you could fit along the western curb adjacent to their site. Between the post-road and their driveway, and then another uh parking location that you could fit. Um, between the driveway and the southern limit of the property. Um, so between those two lo- locations and on the post-road, that gives you ten on-street parking spaces that we feel are legitimate. Um, for um to be used for commercial use, um which is being proposed by the applicant. Um. If you look further um to fair uh for Overhill, uh Lindberg Court, um again, those are narrower streets. Um, Overhill's about, I believe, thirty-three feet and uh Lindberg, what was uh Lindberg? It was um. Yeah, yeah. So so those again are not, um, I think it was even narrower. Um.
Lindberg says twenty-nine.
Twenty-nine, okay, twenty-nine, yeah, I knew it was less. So again, twenty-nine feet is again very, very uh tight. You know, when you, when you're looking at twelve feet per lane, even eleven feet per lane, you really don't have a whole lot you can squeeze in for a parking lane on on Lindberg.
Just for the record, I'm sure whoever said you're looking at Mr. Santa's.
So so based on all of this, we feel that only those ten locations, those ten spaces are viable for the applicant's use. Um, for overflow parking from their site. All the other streets in the neighborhood, we feel are 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 deficient. Um, you know, for um for this activity uh to occur. And and I'll get into more of that um in in a minute. Actually, I'll I'll do it right now. I think it probably is better to do it right now. So while on the subject, so um. If you, if you look at like, for instance, like Lindberg Street. If if the applicant were to have spillover into that street and park on both sides of the street, you know, thirty foot, thirty-three foot wide street. Um, you you take away eight or nine feet for the parking, it doesn't allow two-way traffic. So you have a very deficient um setup along along Lindberg. Um, you also have only sidewalk in front of one residential um. Home on Lindberg and then everywhere else in the study area in the local streets have no sidewalks. So anybody who parks on those streets would have to walk in the street to get to their development. Which is, which is unsafe, especially if you have cars parked on both sides of the street and cars are. Can only go one at a time down the street. It creates a very, very dangerous situation. The only other option is for people to walk on private property along uneven um uneven ground, which is, which is dangerous in its own respect as well. And it's it's really not legal to walk on people's uh pri- private property. So um and then the lighting is poor. Uh, so we feel that 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 it sets up a very dangerous situation on any one of these streets. Um, for people who park, especially at night, to um to get between where they park their car and get to the um the applicant's property. Also, um, in addition to that. The um. The proliferation of parking on these local streets, as Mr. Santa showed in his his diagram, uh people are gonna just park wherever and and. They may not allow for enough room or space from each of the uh homeowner's driveways. So for people to be able to back out of their driveway safely is gonna be disastrous, especially if there's cars parked on both sides of the street. Trying to back up and not hit the people parked across from their driveway. Um, site distance is gonna be terrible backing out of their own driveway. Um. People walking in the street as they back out of their, out of their driveway. Again, you have all these, all these um. Hazards which have set up because of the overflow parking in in the neighborhood. And I'll, and I'll get to the uh the details of of the overflow in a minute. Um, but but as you can see, it it sets up a very, very dangerous um scenario in in these neighborhoods, which, you know, have kids playing and people walking their dogs and. Whatnot, so it 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 really creates, it really changes the entire character of this, of the subdivisions uh. Adjacent to and 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 residential blocks adjacent to these uh to the applicant's property. Um, so I wanna just go and 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 take a look, just as I summarized before. So there's fifty-three cell- cell um uh spaces, eighteen street level, and then seven on the post-road. Zero on on Fairfield Place, this is what we see from the from the data, and three on on Lindberg, on the on the west side of Lindberg. Which gives you a total of eighty-one spaces between the onsite and off-site locations um that are that are would be available to the applicant's. Uh, customers and and residents. So as I, as I mentioned before, you know, parking utilization cannot be directly explained by trip generation. Um. As I mentioned, the the um. The employees are a big piece of this and occupy a lot of spaces. Uh, and I'm gonna show you how eighteen spaces that they have reserved for the commercial activity on the site is 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 significantly deficient. Um, so, yeah, so the next thing is how we calculated, the methodology for calculating. The number of spaces that would be occupied during the A M and the P M peak hours. So for the multifamily, we assumed four full-time employees that drive to work. I think somewhere they mentioned three in one location, but um then two visitor spaces. Uh, two, well, two, yeah, they had two visitor spaces on the, as as part of the um the eighteen. Um, but we feel that there might be more than uh two visitors during the P M peak hours, up to four. And then the the visitor's average length to stay would be probably an hour or an hour and a half if they're coming to visit somebody or dropping something off or. So the these are, these are the factors that we used. For the coffee shop, we assume that four full-time employees uh that would drive to work. Um, the coffee shop would have twenty-five, twenty-five seats. And the average length of stay would be ten minutes if you're just picking up your coffee and leaving, or up to thirty minutes if you're sitting in one of the. Seats and um and taking your time to drink your coffee or having a Danish or whatever you you do with your coffee. Um, for the restaurant, we assume seven full-time employees who drive to work. We feel that number should be about thirteen or fourteen employees. But we recognize that some of the lower-wage workers might not be able to afford a car. So that they would come by other means like Uber and and Lyft or or take the bus or take the train and walk to the site. So so conservatively, we're using only seven uh full-time employees that drive for the restaurant. Um, there are ninety indoor seats based off the site plan, looking at that, plus forty-two outdoor seats. Um, we assume a two-point-five vehicle occupancy for customers that go to the restaurant. So almost nobody goes to a restaurant by themselves. So typically you have groups of two, three and four that go. That's why you get a a vehicle occupancy rate of about two-point-five for restaurants. Okay, and then the customer average length to stay, since this is more of a a high-end restaurant, uh. Upscale restaurant, it would be more like sixty or ninety minutes to stay in the restaurant, not not twenty minutes or a half hour like. With a high turnover um type type restaurant. And then the retail, um, since it's pretty small, we assume. And then the retail, um, since it's pretty small, we assume two full-time employees that would drive to the, to the site. And the average length to stay in the, in the, uh, retail would be about twenty minutes, based on, on just industry averages and things that we've used over the years for, um, for rates. Okay, so if you can go to the, uh, the next table. This is where we did the calculations on the number of, of parking spaces that would be, uh, used by, um, by the, the residents and, and the employees and the customers going to the proposed development. So based on the data, uh, a demand of thirty-four vehicles is projected to exceed the eighteen street-level parking spaces, uh, by sixteen vehicles. Um, and if you look at both the eighteen street level and the ten on-street parking spaces, it would be over by six vehicles during the AM. So the way we, we looked at this is that we, we looked at the fifty-three spaces as accommodating the residents only, and then the eighteen would, would basically be covering everything else. So then if you look at the, um, the, the estimates, so fifty-three for residents, four for employees, two for visitors, and then the coffee shop, four, um, employees would require parking. Um, a max of fifteen customers during the AM peak hour with the combination of people jumping in and jumping out to get their, um, to get their coffee and then, and then the rest would be, um, sitting down, um, in, in the, uh, twenty-five seats. Um, the restaurant, um, was, was, was split. We assumed four, uh, employees in the morning who would be doing the prep work for the, uh, for the day. And then seven would be, uh, in the, in the restaurant during the peak PM when the customers would be there. Uh, the, the bulk of the customers would be there. And like I said, these numbers were weighed down significantly because of, um, we felt that, uh, lower-income, uh, folks wouldn't have the means necessarily to own a, their own vehicle. So they'd have alternative means to get to the site. Okay, for the, for the restaurant, we assume that, um, with ninety tables and two-point-five vehicle occupancy, if it were full, um, there'd be thirty-six spaces that would be needed, uh, during the, during the PM peak hour. This does not include the forty-two outdoor, seasonal outdoor spaces, so we didn't even include that. Um, again, trying to be conservative and to try to show as realistic numbers as, as possible. And then for the retail, we assumed that you'd have the two employees and then you'd have two, the peak of two customers at any given time in the, um, in the store. So when that totals out, you get eighty-seven, a parking demand of eighty-seven, um, people that need, uh, a place to park. Um, and if you only look at the site parking, which has seventy-one, you get a deficiency of sixteen during the AM. And if you include the ten spaces on the street, you get it down to a, a, um, a negative six. So you're, you're short six, six parking spaces in the AM. And that changes significantly during the PM. Because you have a demand of a hundred and eighteen parking spaces during the PM peak hour, which would be a net, um, deficiency of forty-seven spaces for just on the site. And then if you include the, the ten on-street parking spaces, you'd have, uh, a net deficiency of thirty-seven spaces.
If you added the, um, so you omitted the forty-two.
Correct.
Outside dining.
Right.
What are the usual, what's usual, uh, months that that takes place, and I'm thinking like?
Probably, uh, April, could be April to October, for six months. I mean, it wouldn't be, it wouldn't be, um, insignificant. You know, um, you know, if we were in, uh, you know, in Plattsburgh, New York, it would probably be a lot less than that, but. In Connecticut, it'd probably be, you know, six, give or take five, six months, I think.
What would be the demand for those forty-two?
So it would be forty-two divided by two-point-five.
Twenty or so, something like that, or?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, yes.
That would be added on to those?
That would be added on to the, the hundred and eighteen, right. Assuming that the restaurant is doing well and they, and they have, uh, all the seats taken. Um, as you can see, it, uh, it requires a heck of a lot of parking, uh, based on, you know, what the applicant is, is proposing. So, you know, in comparison to what, uh, Mr. Santa did, he did it more from a zoning tra- uh, engineering perspective. I'm looking at it from an operations perspective. You know, realistically, what could you expect with, with this, with this density of, of development on the site?
Yes, could, could just, oh, but I'm not saying if you have the outdoor dining, wouldn't, wouldn't that necessarily, would it necessarily follow that you may not have as many people inside at the restaurant?
It, it could be, but, I mean, again, that's why, one of the reasons we didn't include it, because there's a lot of unknowns, but it's possible if you look at the worst-case scenario, which, which, again, you wanna always look at, you know, the, the worst case as well, then it would be additive, it wouldn't be in lieu of, so, yeah, you're right. Um, yeah, that, definitely.
It's also hard to tell what percentage of these people would be coming from inside the building versus driving there and parking there.
Right, so.
They're, you know, from the building, I suppose.
Right, and I mean, I mean, look, if you, if you're looking at a high-end restaurant, how many times a week can people who live there go there? You know, it's just, it's just, it gets to a point where you wanna go to that same restaurant three times a week. I, I don't, you know, maybe when it first opened, you first moved there, but, but shortly thereafter, you wanna, you wanna go someplace else. I mean, you don't wanna, I mean, some people will do it, but I think it's, it's, it's negligible. It's, it's not like it's a, uh, you know, a pizzeria where somebody could go, you know, religiously one time a week to the pizzeria, you know, 'cause they, they'd have pizza, but for this kind of restaurant where it wouldn't be as cheap and, uh, you know, it, 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 I don't, I don't believe that it would be frequent as, as much as perhaps some, some people would think.
The other point is, you might get, uh, one car might decide to tune it to, right, you got a resident and a first car.
Right, yeah, right. E- e- exactly. And again, like I said, you know, we didn't include the outdoor to try to keep the number realistic without being, uh, overly, um, overly, uh, estimating what, what we expect. So. All right, so getting to, uh, some takeaways and. So as, as I've mentioned here, you know, clearly the applicant, um, provides far fewer spaces than what we feel uh, would be the actual demand of a space. Not, not dealing with zoning, but, but in terms of a practical nature. What could you expect based on using planning data and, and, and using the, uh, the proposed, uh, um, projects as they, as they sit now? Um, the applicant's traffic report does not address parking at all, which is why we ended up doing this more detailed, uh, approach. You could see, uh, where we feel there are some deficiencies in, in what they're proposing and, and, and what its effect would be on the local residents, which is not, um, which, which is not, um, uh, very, um, very promising for the, for the local neighbors. It, it's not inconsequential, the, the number of, of parking spaces that would be needed to be placed outside of the, uh, outside of the, uh, the site. Typically, uh, when I've reviewed some things like, some applicants like this, applications like this before, you know, then a lot of times the applicant will say, "Well, we'll just have the, um, the, the employees park ten blocks away and they'll walk to the site." Again, I, I don't think that that's a practical thing, uh, because there's really no place other than the immediate streets adjacent to the site where the, the employees could park. So I, I don't see that, a- a- as Mr., um, Santa mentioned, you know, there's really no alternative to, to those particular, uh, spaces, um, that are within close proximity of the, um, of the proposed development. The applicant will rely on, will, will, will have to rely on on-street parking as, as these numbers, uh, demonstrate that you just can't fit all of the, uh, all of the parking on the site, which is what their, um, you know, their contention is. We, you know, we, we disagree with, with their assessment of that, um, of that, um, observation. Um, so the net effect of this is that the local residents will bear the brunt of the noise and inconvenience of people parking in front of their homes and occupying spaces they could use for their visitors, uh, and for deliveries and things. And as I mentioned, backing out of driveways could become dangerous with so many people parking on the street. Um, lighting is, 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 is deficient, as I mentioned, and would exacerbate the, uh, the situation. Uh, the narrow street with poor lighting, lack of sidewalks would be unsafe for pedestrians to walk either in the streets or on uneven ground on the, on the, uh, private homeowner's, uh, properties, which I mentioned. Okay, so conclusions, um, providing only one delivery loading space on the site is insufficient and shall create, uh, circulation issues. Um, the IT trip generation, uh, presented, as I mentioned, underestimates the number of, of visitors to the, to the, to the, uh, residential portion because of, um, the increase of, of deliveries and, and, and typical, um, um, post, post-COVID, uh, activity at residential locations, which the IT does not take into consideration, at least the current one doesn't. Um, the applicant's crash analysis, like I mentioned, did not, uh, include the fatal, uh, crash. Um, they did not include the parking utilization study or operations plan, um, to share with, with all of you, uh, similar to what we had done, and what Mr. Santa did, to really get at why there are deficiencies and, and, and that, that they would be a huge, um, safety issue for the local streets and local, local residents. Um, and we don't feel any commercial or long-term parking should be allowed on any of those local streets because of all the deficiencies that I have mentioned. And then lastly, again, I can't emphasize enough that, you know, backing out of these driveways with all these cars is gonna be very unsafe for the, uh, residents. People walking their dogs will be unsafe with all these cars. Uh, there's a, a whole litany of things that will significantly and adversely affect, uh, the residents of, of, of this community.
I don't, I, do the applicant's report, um, go into the use of these side streets as a cut-through? We heard that in other applications, that, uh, in some of the letters that came in, that if people.
Yeah.
Either get off I- ninety-five because of a bad backup, they end up on the post road, then they get off the post road because there's a bad backup.
Right.
I hear they, I know they cut through, that's what I hear.
Yeah, so.
Addressed in the applicant's report.
Well, they did, so, uh, from memory serves me that coming into the site, they, I think it's two vehicles, I forget which peak period it is, it might be both. They come down, uh, Lindberg Street and turn left into the, into the driveway on Lindberg.
I mean, cut-through traffic, I mean, people going in there. I mean, people getting off the post road to cut through to, to avoid a traffic jam.
Oh, that, that, yeah, that, that's, that's something that typically is not part of, uh, this type of traffic analysis.
Oh, okay.
Um, I mean, that would be completely, that would be insane that people would do something like that.
Look at insanity. By direct observation, I can say the curse.
Yeah.
Would that affect, uh, the danger situation there?
Absolutely, absolutely, no question about it. I mean, you know, if people who park their car and have to walk to the, uh, the businesses, they have to cross over that, that circulation road that runs right through the middle of the, of the site. And if people are trying to rush and get through there, um, it clearly would be a, um, would be dangerous situation. And that's a one-way, um, heading westbound. Now, to, to make it even worse, somebody could cut through, they're going in the wrong direction, even though there's gonna be most likely signs that say, "Do not enter" and, and whatnot, which, you know, they would, they would put in to make it safe. But people could go in, in the wrong direction and which would make it even worse, you know, to, to echo your point.
Thank you.
Um, I, I am not gonna, my, unfortunately, my laptop just died, but putting that aside, uh, it's done for the night, but, uh, I am not gonna be able to complete my presentation in the next nine minutes. But I would just like to offer, I think, a couple of comments. And all I have, um, the next session is, I, I need to go through, obviously, the proposed map amendment and text amendment, so I think I can do that in a half hour. But I, um, I just wanna, the commissioner will just bear with me for one moment. Point, uh, that I wanted to get into is the applicant has made this representation of a high-end restaurant, uh, and a coffee shop as being proposed uses. But, but in all candor, they indicated that it's kind of a, a vanilla box when you get it, and it's a restaurant. And one of the issues that is confronted this commission, uh, in the battle of seven-fifty post road, the Chick-fil-A that I know many of you sat through, uh, one of the frustrating, um, aspects of that is that our regulations really don't discern between these restaurant uses. And so, and I just want to, uh, you'll just bear with me, I'm doing this on my phone. The categories of uses permitted in the, um, NDBD, I'm sorry, I, the downtown business district. Um, it are, correct, center design business district. Um, restaurants and other food service establishments where customers are served only when seated at tables or counters. Such uses may include, eh, may include food takeout service incidental to the primary permitted use, but shall not include establishments where customers are served in motor vehicles or served primarily at takeout counters. The other category is restaurant and food service, and it says including non-table service restaurants and catering. Everything is allowed except service in cars, basically. And I point this out because what happened with Chick-fil-A is Chick-fil-A falls into this category because you make an order at a counter and, as I understand it, you get a ten, uh, some sort of a number and your, the food comes out to your table, or that's the, the way it was operated at the beginning. So something, so you can call it Chick-fil-A or Chips or Centro or Esch, or pick your favorite restaurant. They all come under this category of restaurant. So what you're getting in that space, and I take the applicant at their word in that they want a high-end restaurant that is desirable to their tenants. But we cannot exert that kind of control as the regulations are, are presently written, developments are sold, projects are sold, and the, the next buyer or the third owner after that may obtain a favorable lease from a super-high-volume operator who operates the same way. So you, when we, so the, sort of these images, and I know I touched on this with Jim's and stuff like that, these images we conjure up as uses have got to be carefully considered in terms of how the regulations are written. Uh, so that, that's just a, sort of a cautionary comment.
I mean, it's a fair point. I mean, I wouldn't, I wouldn't have used Chick-fil-A, I thought we did a good job considering this, the specificity, well, the actual, we knew what the restaurant was. Thankfully, the, the applicant was forthcoming with that, and it was the drive-thru. And I thought we did a decent job acknowledging that. And your point's well-taken, I mean, 'cause that's what we had to deal with at the time.
And I'm not being critical at all.
No, I know you're not, actually, it seemed to have worked out, I think, generally, so, I mean.
Right.
But your point's well-taken.
But my point is, it went from Joe's, and I pointed out to the commission that, yes, you could get something to go at Joe's if you asked them to wrap it up, uh, to go, or you said, "I, I wanna take this out," and when it was Joe's American. And it's Chick-fil-A. And those fall under the same, they're in the same, under the same umbrella, that's my point. And so.
Putting the drive-thru aside, it's, but yes, correct.
And I, again, I wasn't, uh, at all, I, I greatly appreciate the time and effort, and I think it did work out well, uh, thus far. Uh, the other thing is, there is this requirement, as, um, Devin Santa had pointed out in his report, and it strikes me that twelve-point-ten-point-three-point-one does, and I'll just read it. It says, "The applicant shall submit a parking study indicating parking demand, proposed land uses and rationale for satisfying the parking demand of the land uses. For multiple tenant properties," well, this doesn't exactly apply, "but "for multiple tenant properties with a common or shared parking areas permitted in section twelve, "the total number, required number of spaces otherwise required in section twenty-eight "may, at the commission's discretion, be reduced." I'll comment at that in a moment. "The applicant must demonstrate the adequacy and viability of a proposed reduction, "and such reduction shall be subject to a public hearing." Well, first of all, nothing has been done, the applicant has not provided you with that parking study. To the contrary, it is the neighbors who have produced this information on, on the parking load. Um, I would urge the commission to avoid, uh, reducing parking requirements because there is this concept, and I would urge you to co- um, consult the town attorney of uniformity. Uh, and where there aren't hard standards for action by the commission, uh, sort of these waivers are, are troublesome under the law. Uh, because when people. Uh, because when people, when the citizens of Fairfield or developers read the, the regulations, they should be able to understand sort of the hard metrics. This uniformity avoids discretion or judging cases on a case-by-case basis. So uh, I, I just wanted to offer that.
But that regulation goes with, a regulation that's in place that gives us discretion to reduce parking.
Correct.
Right? In this case, it's not like we're under that rubric. We are actually amending regulations.
I agree.
So that if they agree, if, if we adopted them, we're following the regulations, not using discretion to go less than those.
Yeah, well, let's just stick with the first sentence that says, "The applicant shall submit a parking study," though, indicating parking.
Yeah, but it's under that, it's under that section. It's not like, yeah.
It is.
I mean, it's just, it's an interesting scenario. I hadn't thought about it until it was brought up, Mr. Santa, I think, in his report. Where you, I
He did.
You guys, obviously. Um, and then I had to go look it up and double-check with staff, and that's when I wanted to understand this. So I mean,
Yeah.
I think your point still is, you know, the, the applicant should still want, you, you still need to make sure that the uh parking is uh sufficient.
And we will get into this uh on my presentation on the regs, but obviously, sitting as a planning, when you're sitting, exercising your planning function, then this commission has obviously wide discretion, and I know Attorney Fallon will touch on that at his closing as well. But in exercising that discretion, obviously, sort of these factors and these, these uh, all this evidence that's been produced this evening, certainly factor, and I would think heavily into that discretion. So.
So a good time, I think, right? Um, all right, so we will adjourn the hearing. And the, the application of the hearing, we will adjourn the meeting, and the appli- uh, application of the hearing remain open. Next time we meet, we'll be in public comments still, Green will finish up in the public. That's what I was going. We're not sure yet.
It's gonna depend on your availability.
I'm not sure. We had a discussion earlier.
My idea is, it's just gonna depend on your.
We had a discussion earlier that uh the public may not have been here for. Uh, we, with the moratorium, the A three, the A three G moratorium to be applied for, you know, we just have a lot, a lot of applications coming in. We've been very busy, and we have deadlines for meeting, not just this application, but others. We will post and note of, notice um when the next meeting, and then that, when this application will be heard next.
Yeah, we, yes, we will, we, if we did for this continuation.
I suspect after Christmas would be.
We will communicate. It will definitely be after the new year.
It will be after the new year. Well, the applica- the next time we meet will be after the new year.
Yeah.
And we probably will modify after Christmas or whatever.
We, we have a meeting next week that's not pertaining to this. Um, hopefully by then, we can, we can have some
Oh, that's right.
discussions to pin down where we're heading from.
Um, so Attorney Green, I hope you've got a bunch of clients, you'll, that'll get disseminated through you, I hope.
We will communicate this.
Yeah.
And then one, just in terms of.
Hold on, guys, let me just turn it.
Just, when, when you do get ready, from my, my perspective, um, my understanding is your, your fourteenth meeting is already spoken for.
Yes.
That's my understanding. And, and um, the next regularly scheduled meeting, the twenty-eighth, which is fine. If you're gonna be juggling, looking at me, I'm not available on the twenty-first. So, uh, my hope would be that, and I've already given the extension.
That's fine, okay, that's helpful then, though.
Yeah.
Attorney Green, I think.
We can talk after, but, but.
I mean, or schedule it.
We're gonna need every Tuesday at Channing.
Yeah, I know.
Just do my best.
Two things on for the special meeting next week. We have the Tuxedos Hill one and the Stilson Road one?
Yes.
You're gonna be doing.
I'm talking to Stilts, this is, it's the notice, it's not this.
Uh, we normally meet twice a month, and we've been meeting four, three times a month, so uh, it's just been busy. We need to do this work, and that's fine, and everybody needs to have their fair share uh to be heard. Um, so we will plow through. Thank you for your patience. Thank you for your presentation, your diligence.
Thank you.
I will, as I said, adjourn the meeting, the application and the hearing remain open.